A quorum being present, this special town meeting will now come to order. The warrant for this special town meeting was signed by the Board of Selectmen on October 16th, 2018. The warrant is posted on the town's official website pursuant to the town's general bylaws, and the warrant was posted by Constable Antonio Amaral on October 17th, 2018. Therefore, I declare that the requirements of Chapter 2, Section 3 of the general bylaws of the town, and Chapter 39, Section 10 of the Massachusetts General Laws have been satisfied. The moderator and town clerk have appointed the following as tellers for this meeting: On the left side, Lorraine Carbone. On the right side, Kimberly Borges-Borge. And for the center, Sylvester Zinkowitz. All of the above have been sworn in by the town clerk. This meeting will be operated in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, the town's general bylaws, and by precedent of prior town meetings. While the town bylaws address some of the parliamentary procedures, prior town meetings have relied upon a volume called Town Meeting Time. Town Meeting Time, as the standard for conduct at Lakeville town meetings. It is my contention to continue this. You will note that two microphones have been positioned in each of two aisles, hopefully directly under a light. I ask that you seek, if you seek recognition from the moderator, you go to one of the two microphones. You must be at a microphone to be recognized by a moderator, and when recognized, please state your name, and if you would like to say where your address is, feel free to do so. If you have a motion, please have it prepared in writing, and after stating your motion, please present it to the moderator, so the clerk will have it as part of the official record of this meeting. Unlike many towns, we have no standard relative to the length that someone may speak. Generally, that has not been an issue. However, I will exercise my prerogatives to keep the meeting moving if I find that a speaker repeats the same points that he or she has raised. Shouting from seats, booing, cheering at individual speakers is not permitted. Any member who interrupts the town meeting in an unacceptable way will be escorted out, and such a member will not be able to return. Do not lose your vote. Please stick to acceptable town meeting behavior. As has been past practice, I will allow the maker of the motion an opportunity to speak on the motion before recognizing anyone else. After the maker of the motions has had an opportunity to speak, I will seek the recommendations of the Finance Committee and any other committee that is necessary. Then, any other registered voter may speak on the article in question. When the motion comes to a vote, I will ask that you hold up the orange card, which was issued to you when you registered upon your arrival this evening and were checked in. During the voting, if I can easily determine the quantum of vote, I will ask you to lower your cards. However, if there is a counted vote, I will ask that you hold up your voting card and keep it elevated, so that the teller can see it and count the votes in your section. The use of the voting card will assure that only the votes of registered eligible voters are counted. Your voting card has a yes and a no printed on it. This is printed on there just in case we have a secret ballot vote, but we may not use it, and we generally have not used it for quite a while. Do not lose your voting card. It cannot be replaced. Regarding motions to reconsider, a motion to reconsider can only be made by one who has voted on the prevailing side. A motion to reconsider is acceptable only if new information has come to light that might have caused members to vote otherwise had the information been available earlier. A motion to reconsider is not acceptable simply because many people have left. This is a parliamentary ploy and will not be allowed. A motion to reconsider must pass by two-thirds vote by Lakeville Bylaw. By past town meeting tradition, a motion to reconsider an article can only be made once. I would like to remind you that only bottled water is permitted in the auditorium. Let us now stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Finally, I would like to introduce those of us who are on the stage. To my immediate left and continuing, our Lillian Drain, Town Clerk, followed by Rita Gobert, Town Administrator, Greg Corbo, Town Council, Missy Hollenbeck, Selectman, Aaron Burke, Selectman, John Powderly, Selectman, George Volopoulos, Finance Committee, Dan Holland, Finance Committee, Catherine DeRoche, Finance Committee, Cassandra Hudson, Finance Committee, Jennifer Cipiora, Finance Committee, and Todd Hazit, Town Accountant. Well, they're supposed to be. If they show you now who they are. Before I get started on Article 1, does anyone require a copy of the warrant? You should have been handed one when you came in and were given the orange card, but if you don't have one, raise your hand and one of the counters will get one for you. Are we all set? I guess we are. I now seek a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Motion has been made and seconded.
Second.
To waive the reading of the warrant. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. It has been unanimously approved. Article 1.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the vote under Article 1 be divided by considering the appropriation for payment of bills from prior fiscal years separately from the remainder of the article.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to divide the article. What this means is that taking the entire article and they're making like a 1A and a 1B. 1A goes to a certain point, and 1B goes to a certain point. And I need only seven votes to approve this. All in favor of dividing the article, please raise your cards. I see seven votes. Please put them down. Just for chuckles, how many are opposed? Nobody? Okay. We have divided the article.
Hey, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $12,845.96, and transfer the sum of $27.60 from landfill enterprise expense for a total appropriation of $12,873.56 for the payment of bills from prior fiscal years as set forth on the chart printed on page six of the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Would you care to speak to it?
I would. So, this article is related to certain unpaid bills from the prior fiscal year, which we are appropriating out of taxation and the landfill enterprise fund to accommodate those bills for payment.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question? No questions. This is because it's paying unpaid bills, it's a nine-tenths vote. Ninety percent. All in favor of this article, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare that the 1A part of this warrant article has passed unanimously.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $203,362, transfer the sum of $2,500 from fire chief wages, and transfer from free cash the sum of $1,141,500 for a total appropriation of $1,347,362 to defray unanticipated costs for fiscal year 2019 for the various accounts in the general fund as shown on the chart on page six of the warrant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to it?
I would. These transfers are related to a number of different things that we have started to do related to our financial policies that were enacted both by the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee back in 2016, along with some other items that have popped up as we have been going through the budget for fiscal year 19. The first component is a transfer of fire chief wages, $2,500, to the Emergency Management Director. That was done in conjunction with the new appointment of the fire chief, with Danny Hopkins being appointed as the fire, the Emergency Management Director. So that's a stipend for that position. In addition to that, we're raising a number of different items from our recap sheet on taxation, which is going towards IT director wages, $20,000. That component is related to additional IT needs that have been identified after the budget was set. The $37,500 is a transfer for town administrator wages, which is to double up the town administrator services as we move into the next component of hiring the town administrator, as Rita will be retiring come August of 2019. In addition to that, we are going to be conducting a search for that town administrator, and that's where we have the $10,000 and the contracted services for that search. We have $66,000 for additional IT expenses on certain modules with our town's computer system for Munis for $66,000. We have $69,862, which is for debt service and interest on the new police station. The next component in that bill payment will be due prior to the next fiscal year when we set the budget. In addition to that, we have transfers from free cash. Again, going back to the policies that the Board of Selectmen has made along with the Finance Committee for the uses of free cash. We have $291,500 going to the Debt Service Capital Project Stabilization Fund. We have been funding that account to try to smooth out the debt service payments that we'll have as we look at the long-term liabilities of the town itself. $400,000 for the OPEB contribution. Currently, as we've been talking about, the OPEB liability, which is for health insurance benefits for retirees, is currently calculated by our actuaries at $12 million. And we have begun a funding schedule for that liability. In addition to that, there's a funding schedule that's appropriate as well for the school district, which is another component as well, which is not part of this $12.5 million liability. We have $400,000 that we're setting aside for roadwork repairs, which we are looking to be able to use in the current fiscal year, so that we could address some of the road needs that are out there. And $50,000 for the Reserve Fund, which is the fund that the Finance Committee has full authority to determine in terms of dissemination for whatever expenses that are presented to the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Are there any questions? No questions. Then we'll move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no cards. I declare that this is passed by a unanimous vote. Article 2.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the Park Enterprise Fund retained earnings, the sums of $75,000 for the construction of new athletic fields on town-owned land, and all costs incidental and related thereto, and $2,500 for the purchase of a new bunker raid.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends approval.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to it?
Just briefly, we all know that these piles of dirt have been sitting across from the current police station, and it would be great to get those spread, get more materials, and finish up those fields that we so desperately need. That's actually coming out of the Park retained earnings, which is currently about $235,000. So it's simply appropriating out of an already existing fund. Thank you.
Does anyone have a question? Seeing none, we will move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see no opposed. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article 3.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $119,910 to pay costs of capital improvements, and all costs incidental and related thereto as follows: One new boat and equipment for the police department, $40,500. One new fuel system and equipment for the highway, $26,000. One new storage building foundation, and all costs incidental to installation for the highway department, $21,410. Two new oil tanks, pumps, piping, and other material and equipment, and all costs incidental to installation for the highway department, $32,000. And that to meet this appropriation, $108,500 shall be transferred from free cash, and $11,410 shall be transferred from the unexpended balance of Article 5 Annual Town Meeting held on June 4th, 2018, where all the projects set forth in Article 5 have been completed, and no further obligations remain outstanding, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen and other appropriate town officials to take such action as may be necessary to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
We recommend approval.
Would you care to speak to it?
Apparently, I'm asleep. So, this relates to a number of different capital requests that have come in after the fiscal year had closed for the budget purpose, including a new boat at the police department. A lot of these items, everybody would like to get done and purchased prior to next year. Otherwise, we would have to wait until the following year after we have our annual town meeting. The boat is for the police department to be doing more patrols out on Long Pond. And the other three items relate to other needs that happen at the Highway Barn that we are looking to try to fulfill from capital requests.
Thank you. Does anyone care to speak?
Hello. My name is John Jenkins. I live on Pickens Street. The question about the new boat, is it replacing a boat that the police department has now?
Does it?
I don't believe so. I think there is a fire boat, but we don't have a police boat.
They used to have a police boat years ago, and fell into disrepair, and we auctioned it off last year.
Got it. Okay. And did I understand correctly, the new boat is $119,000?
No, the sum of all of those four capital items is $119,000. The boat is $40,500.
All right. I was gonna say, that's an awful nice boat. Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, whoop.
Bob Marshall from Barstow Street. You say that those four items add up to 119. If we're transferring 108.5, and then adding 32, 21, 4, and 26, I think that adds up to more than 119,910. Am I not adding the figures correctly?
I don't think. I think you've jumped from one part to another.
What we're saying is, there's also a, I don't know if you're missing the $11,410, which is coming in from the article that happened at the annual town meeting. It was unexpended capital expenses that didn't get expended. So the only transfer from free cash is the 108.5.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak? Seeing none, we move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor of this article, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards. I see no opposition. I declare it passed unanimously. Article 4.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Article 4. I move that the town vote to transfer and appropriate from the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District settlement account, the sum of $68,025 for the purpose of making repairs to the Assawamsted Elementary School, as may be determined by the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Finance Committee?
We recommend approval.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to it?
Yes. As you remember, DESI revised their fiscal year 14,000 assessments due for Lakeville and Free Town to the Regional School District, which resulted in reducing Lakeville's assessment in the amount of $268,525. The school committee did not vote a revised fiscal year 14 budget, so the town of Lakeville filed a friendly lawsuit against the district for reimbursement in the amount of $268,525. The town has received the full reimbursement of $268,525 over three years, and two prior town meetings have authorized $200,000 to be appropriated for the purpose of making repairs at the Assawamsted Elementary School. This warrant article will authorize the balance of $68,025 to be appropriated for the purpose of making repairs at Assawamsted School. So, the Selectmen and certainly the town has invested all of the friendly lawsuit, or will invest it all, back into the school, updating it for whatever the purview is. It's under the purview of Nate Dowling, our building commissioner. In addition to this 268, we have a current energy grant from the state for over $247,000. And we've also put in earlier energy grants and town funds to the tune of about $200,000. So we expect to invest about $715,000 plus into the Assawamsted School. And the plus to that is that already the school has been regraded, if you will, by the state school system, and we went up a notch in the condition of the building, which was great, and we'll continue to reinvest into the Assawamsted School. Thank you.
Does anyone have a question? Seeing none, we will go to a vote. All in favor of Article 4, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed to Article 4, please raise your cards. I see no cards. He sat way in the back for effect.
Okay. Article 5. I move that the town vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into payments in lieu of taxes pilot agreement pursuant to MGL, Chapter 9, Section 38 HB, Chapter 164, Section 1, or any other enabling authority for a term of years and upon such other terms and conditions as the Board shall deem in the best interest of the town. For personal property associated with a solar facility on a parcel of privately owned land, map 26, block 4, lot 4, located at 129 Crooked Lane, upon which such facility is located, and to take all actions necessary to implement such agreement.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We do. We recommend approval.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to it, Mr. Oliveri?
Sure. This is a pilot agreement. What this warrant article does is it allows the Board of Selectmen to enter into an agreement with the entity that's putting the solar farm up on Crooked Lane, so that they can collect, come into an agreement for 20 years for taxes. The reason that we want to enter into the pilot agreement is because the technology associated with solar farms, the prices on the equipment itself come down so drastically that it prevents the tax income to the town from dropping significantly over that course of time.
Thank you. Does anyone have a question?
Sylvester Zinkowitz, Anaconda Drive. Last Monday, or Monday a week ago, we did the warrant review over this entire warrant, if you remember, Mr. Moderator. And this item was pulled. It was not going to be, it was not going to be discussed. It wasn't discussed at the warrant review, and it was going to be pulled out of this. Now, at warrant review, I was ready to speak to it, but where did it, how did it get a new life?
Would anyone on the table?
You remember that meeting?
Would anyone at the table care to respond to that?
I do recall that, Zink, but I don't, I don't know why, why this happened the way it did. I mean, I don't know why we're hearing it tonight when we didn't the other night.
We heard that we were not going to do it tonight the other night. That's what we heard.
As I understand, the other night, it was that the assessor was not present.
From what I recall from that meeting was really that it wasn't determined whether or not it would be pulled, we would have additional information. I think the Finance Committee met on it to discuss it tonight at their meeting at 6:30.
And did approve it?
And did approve.
Does this respond to your question? I don't think it does.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. It's, I'm not prepared to, you know, to fight it. It's, I need to, I specifically came to that meeting with you for this item and one other item, and I remember, I remember that it wasn't going to come up tonight.
I'm sorry you're not prepared, but we can still continue with the article. Mr. Marshall?
Bob Marshall from Barstow Street. If this was discussed by the FinCom this evening with additional information, I'd like to know what that additional information was. I know nothing about this. I'm depending on those of you who are in town government to, to know why we're putting this forward. I don't know why. I don't understand, and I sympathize with Mr. Zinkowitz, that if it was going to be withdrawn, and now it isn't, I'd like to know why it's being, why it was going to be withdrawn, why it now is back on the table, and what this is all about, and what new information we had.
Sure. The Finance Committee voted on all the articles tonight. This was just one additional one. This was just another article that we voted on. So this was, there was nothing separate that was discussed about this article specifically. So it's important to note that. The other thing, the only question that was raised about this is where are the, where are the funds essentially going to go? Are we, are we actually going to take the power that's generated from this and disperse it? And it was, it was determined that, no, this money's going to go back as basically, it's going to create revenue. So that's the only discussion that we had about this, other than what is on the article. There was no additional information. In terms of what happened at the warrant review, I was not there, so I'll pass it over.
Yeah, and this is Dan. I was present.
I was present, the way I recall it, my note said that it may be tabled. That's what I wrote in my notes. There was no, as I recall it, there was no commitment that it would be tabled indefinitely. So, I don't know if that's just a misunderstanding from the other night, or how it ended up here.
Mr. Moderator, I think Town Council would like to clarify.
Yes, I would, wish you would.
Thank you, through you, Ms. Moderator. Just to explain what this article is doing. So, a payment in lieu of tax agreement is something that is negotiated between a property owner and the town, when the property owner's property is not necessarily subject to taxation in the same way other properties are taxed. And so, what this does is, it allows the town to enter into an agreement to ensure a certain stream of tax revenue over the period of the agreement, which is typically twenty years, and it gives the property owner foreseeability as to what their taxes are going to be. Under the laws it stands right now, there's a substantial question as to whether or not the personal property of a solar facility is subject to taxation at all. And the appellate tax court has come down against municipalities on that in several cases. So, it's really for the benefit of the town to authorize an agreement like this, so that they can ensure that this facility is taxed over the period of the next twenty years. That's really all that this is doing. It doesn't really have anything to do with the electricity that's going to be generated, or what's going to happen with the electricity. This is solely a tax agreement between the town and a property owner.
Thank you, Town Council.
Mr. Moderator, to clarify a little bit more, is that the current property is taxed as open farmland, I believe in the sixty-one A. You collect about $4,000 in tax revenue. A pilot agreement of this nature regarding the solar farm typically generates something over a twenty-year period north of $12,000, whether it's-
For the entire period?
-fourteen. It's a number to be negotiated-
That's per year.
-in the future. Per year. So, the tax revenue would go from farmland, if you will, to a tax revenue, hopefully three or four times greater than what you currently get as open land. Thank you.
Have we answered your question?
More or less. I think it would be, would have been helpful to Mr. Zinkowitz, and to me, and perhaps the rest of us, had that information been known at warrant review and discussed, and tonight before we did this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. He was next.
I was just going to clarify.
All right. May he clarify?
Of course.
Thank you.
It may help a little bit. I was at warrant review. The only thing I can think of as far as the discussion of tabling was, there was the potential talk of another entity being involved in this, so if that were the case, there'd be no reason to negotiate. But, we moved forward with it anyways, because this just gives the selectmen the ability to negotiate. This pilot agreement stuff needs to happen at town meeting, so if we didn't do it now, everything gets put on hold. And in addition to John's point, it's actually a much more significant income source to the town, because this property right now is in sixty-one A. It comes out of sixty-one As. We get up to five years' worth of the back taxes, plus interest in the property itself, and the $12,000 per year is in addition to that property tax. So, it, I mean, I don't know exactly what, it could be eight, nine, ten times the amount of tax revenue.
Just for clarification, for those people who do not know what a sixty-one A is, it is a special clause in the law that permits very low taxation for farmland. And you have to apply for it, and then, once it is granted, it stays that way with very low taxation for as long as the person continues to farm it. What he was just indicating now is that it's coming out of sixty-one A because it's not being put to a farm use. So, there's some additional taxation coming out of that, plus the $12,000 or so that may be negotiated. That's what sixty-one A is about. Sir?
Dick Scott, Rushburn Road. You explained how the taxation is handled under the current situation. Under sixty-one A and B, the provisions are, if it comes out, the town has, I believe, the ability to purchase that property within a certain period of time. In light of the fact that we would enter into the agreement that you've described, would we still, if, for example, instead of the solar farm being there for twenty years, it was only there for seven years, would we still be protected with regard to having that stay-open space, or not be developed as housing, for example, or something like that? Is the agreement on taxation going to protect the town if it doesn't go for the full twenty years?
Well, it's a multiple question.
I've learned you've got to get it in.
Sixty-one A and sixty-one B are different, and the town has refusal if it is sold, okay? If the same people who possess it as a farm move it into something else, the town doesn't get that option. Now, do you want to answer that last piece of question about the twenty years?
Yeah.
A land lease?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's important to note, too, that the pilot is actually on the personal property. It's not on the land itself, so the property itself is still being taxed in its current state. It was transferred out of sixty-one A to industrial use. That's what happened, and then we had the rollback tax that was calculated. So, the pilot is specifically related to the equipment that happens to sit on the land. They have a twenty-year land lease with this particular property, but at the end of that lease, it will be underlying industrials, industrials-owned land.
Does that answer your question, sir?
I think what Dick said is we're only entering agreement on the equipment.
That's correct. It's a land, they're leasing the land from the original owner. Yes, sir?
Yes, Soleska Zinkowitz again. I wasn't going to mention it, but now that John mentioned it, Oliveri, Mr. Oliveri. The, I was, I didn't know who we were going to be dealing with. The fellows on the job thought that, this is just about a week ago, they thought the place that they had sold, it's just a rumor, just guys talking in the field, but I thought that that was the reason why it was being pulled, was because the ownership was changing. That's-
Okay. And is that, it's true, it's a lease, right?
It is a lease, yeah, the same property owner retains ownership. They're just leasing out the land, and as Mitzi pointed out, the pilot is for the personal property.
Right, so, okay. That may clarify it, but we have another question.
Hi, John Jenkins, Pickens Street. These are simple questions. How big is the plot of land that we're talking about? How big is plot four, lot four? Are we talking a quarter acre, ten acres?
The solar farm?
Yeah.
Oh, it's a number of acres, dozen acres or so. I'd have to look at the plan. It's a significant, it's a significant solar farm.
Okay. And my second and last question is, is there anybody that's speaking to this article that has a financial interest in the solar farm?
Does anyone here have a financial interest in this? No?
Okay. Thank you.
It would be a conflict of interest if they were. Any further questions?
Just like him.
Oh, he fooled me well. Seeing as there are no further questions, we can move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor of this Article Five, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to Article Five, please raise your cards vigorously. I see one, so I declare it passed by majority vote. Article Six.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of a parcel of land with improvements located at two-ninety-six Bedford Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts, which land is identified on assessor's map zero-five-eight, block zero-zero-one, lot zero-one-four, and described in a deed filed with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and Book fifty-one-seventy, page two-zero-four, from the officer, board, or commission currently having custody and control of said parcel to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, and for the purpose of conveyance and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said property on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deems is in the best interest of the town, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and to execute all instruments as may be necessary or convenient on behalf of the town to effect said conveyance.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee, recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Thank you. Would you care to speak to it?
I would. So, this article authorizes the Board of Selectmen to sell the current police station. If this is approved by the town, the selectmen will move forward with issuing a request for proposals, an RFP, for the sale of the property. We know that that can take some time to do, and we want to make sure that we have a plan in place to dispose of that property when the new station is completed.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes. This comes as a bit of a surprise to me. I know recently it's become more and more difficult for various boards in town to find a place to have a meeting. Not that I would ever recommend the present police station to be something that, where we would, but with minor modifications, or maybe major, I don't know. We need a place to meet. Has any consideration been given to this location for that purpose?
Through me?
I'm sorry.
Aaron?
I don't believe so. I think when we determined to build a police station, it was of the opinion, I think, of our Director of Inspection Services and the Board of Selectmen, that the condition of the current police station isn't one where renovation or rehab would necessarily be something we would want to pursue. I don't want to put words in Nate's mouth, but that seems to be my recollection. Is that, more or less, your thought on it, Nate? Okay.
Well, it makes sense to me, but I raised the issue because if we don't find a place to meet pretty soon, we're going to be in a real pickle, I think. And I know the new police station has some meeting room area and so forth, but it is a concern of mine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Does anyone else wish to make a statement? Seeing none, this is a two-thirds vote, and I'm going to jump the gun. I'm going to ask the counters to count, because if one vote goes the other way, we have to count anyway by Attorney General. So, all counters up. All in favor of this article, please raise your cards. Please keep them up when the counter comes down, so the counter will have an accurate count. Thank you. Fifty-four?
Forty-two.
Forty-two. Thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards. One?
One.
One and zero. I declare it has passed by two-thirds vote. Article Seven.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the care, custody, and control of a parcel of land with improvements located at Cherry Street, Lakeville, Massachusetts, which land is identified on assessor's map zero-four-two, block zero-one-two, lot zero-one-five-A, and described in a deed filed with the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and Book twenty-eight-three-forty-nine, page one-eighty-eight, from the officer, board, or commission currently having custody and control of said parcel, to the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes, and for the purpose of conveyance, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to convey said property on such terms and conditions, and for such consideration as the Board of Selectmen deems in the best interest of the town, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to enter into all agreements and to execute all instruments as may be necessary or convenient on behalf of the town to effect said conveyance.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Thank you, would you care to speak to it?
Yes, so, this is a parcel of land that is located on Cherry Street. It contains forty-five hundred square feet. It was purchased from the town, purchased by the town in two thousand and four for $2,000. The purpose of this article is to allow us to move forward with selling the property. I think originally it had been purchased for the idea of putting a well or pumping station there for some municipal water needs, or private water needs for that neighborhood. It's actually a parcel that is adjacent to a house, and there used to be a garage on this parcel that no longer exists, but the driveway for that house is actually this parcel. So, that's all I know about that.
Thank you. Does anyone care to speak to this article? No, okay. Then we will move to a vote. This is a two-thirds vote again. Tellers, we're going to do it again. Every two-thirds, I'm going to count. Saves time. All in favor of Article Seven, please raise your cards and keep them up. Thank you. Fifty-six, thank you.
Forty.
Forty, thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to Article Seven, please raise your cards.
Two, zero.
Two, zero, and zero. The vote is one thirty-one to two. I declare it passed by two-thirds vote. Article Eight.
Mr. Moderator, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw relative to filling station as follows. Amend Section four-point-one, Table of Uses, Regulations, subsection four-point-one-point-two, Business Uses, to delete certain language shown in strike-through and insert new language shown bold and underlined as follows. Four-point-one-point-two, Business Uses, Residential, Business, Industrial, Industrial-B. Filling Station, allowed only in areas served by municipal water. No one Residential, Special Permit in Business, No one Industrial, and No one Industrial-B. Or take any action relative there to-
Thank you, the motion has been made. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
While they're talking, does the zoning, the planning board, rather, do they have a meeting regarding this? Excuse me? I need you at the microphone. You were, you had a meeting over this and a vote? Would you care to reveal that?
Yes, sir, we did have a meeting on that, and we did deliberate, and we voted unanimous to represent this to the town as a positive.
Okay, you approved.
We approved.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
We recommend approval.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have a question before he sits down? No, okay, then we go to a vote. Again, it's a two-thirds vote. Again, the other two, it was necessary that we count, because if it is not unanimous, they won't accept it. So, counters, ready? All in favor of this Article Eight, please raise your cards. Keep them up until we finish counting yeses.
Thirty-four.
Thank you.
Thirty-five.
Thank you.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to Article eight, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Four? Thank you. Zero?
Zero.
And zero. One twenty-seven? The vote is one twenty-seven to four. I declare Article eight passed by two-thirds vote. Article nine?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaws, Section 7.0 Special Regulations, Subsection 7.4.6, Specific Uses by Special Permit to Delete Certain Language Shown in Strike-Through and Insert New Language Shown Underlined and Bold as Follows. Specific uses by special permit. Filling, and we're striking out all service stations or automotive repair, garage, Special Permit Granting Authority, Board of Appeals, Business Districts. And it also says that the petitioner shall demonstrate that the proposed station will cause no traffic hazard, congestion, or interference with the flow of traffics, especially at and near intersections, two, that adequate provisions will be made to minimize pollution due to oil, gasoline, and other chemical spills, fumes, and particulates, and three, that there will be no outdoor storage of materials except as provided by the special permit, and no parking of unregistered or wrecked vehicles. I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, Section 7.0 Special Regulations, Subsection 7.4.6, Specific Uses by Special Permit, as printed in Article nine of the warrant.
Thank you. Before you sit down, you jumped over the word "filling," which was underlined. Did you include to read that?
Did I? I did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, okay, you jumped over it.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion made and seconded. Finance Committee have a recommendation?
We recommend approval.
Thank you. Does the planning board have a meeting?
Yes, the planning board had a meeting, and we voted unanimously to move this forward. We had some deliberation as far as the, on this, but it, we voted unanimously to
Thank you.
Pass it to the town.
Mr. Marshall?
I think I understand the purpose of this. However, at the end, if I was listening correctly, there were two additional sections added, 7.0 and 7.4.6, and I don't see anything listed here that indicates what those are. What are they and how do they impact this?
You're on.
Mr. Moderator, through you. Paul. This was also mentioned at the top of the article, where I said, pardon? You okay? Thanks, Paul.
Could you speak to this article, sir, to explain it? Yes?
Now that I gave it to you.
No, I mean, you don't have to read it to me.
No, I know.
Just tell people why you're doing this.
We're doing this because the, there were certain restrictions in there that the building inspector and the, the board that's reviewing all of our zoning bylaws, a bylaw review committee, thought were questionable, and they had, they had questions about where the service station, what they wanted to do is they wanted to remove it from where it says it should be serviced only in areas where there is town water. We, as planning board, we said that it would be important to have service stations, filling stations, where there is town water available, in case there is some extraordinary circumstance where there is a spill or contamination of the groundwater, where there is town water available for the residents in the area, because we don't want to leave the residents in the area without water. And if there is a contamination in the groundwater, then we would need to provide town water for those residents.
Yeah, it's major expensive issues, okay.
Yes, sir.
Sir, do you have a question?
Actually, two of them. This looks like what's happening is we're taking what used to cover filling stations, where you get gas, and automotive repair facilities, where you get your car fixed, and we're eliminating the automotive repair garage from the, from the rules and regs. Is there someplace else in the rules and regs that then is specific that defines what an automotive repair facility needs to abide by to have an automotive repair facility in town?
Sir, through me, could you answer that question?
I would like to see if I could request some assistance from our zoning enforcement official, because he's intimately involved in this. Sorry, Nate.
Nate?
Nathan Darling, Lakeside Avenue. So, there are other places within the bylaw, if you remember correctly, last June, we made all of these changes. This is something that we missed, so they answered the question. There are other places within the bylaw that address automotive repair garages.
So, the answer is it's covered?
It's covered.
Your second question, stay put, Nate, just in case.
My second question was this. I'm glad to hear that the rules and regs are someplace else, and this one was missed, but it's a good indication of what the rules and regs are for the repair facilities. I've driven down 18 by Route 79 for a couple of years and looked at a repair facility that looked like Lakeville's latest landfill. Now, they've pulled the people out of there, it looks like, and the facility's up for sale or something, but that business continued to run for at least two to three years, and it was a complete eyesore. If I used these as the rules, there was unregistered vehicles, there were automotive parts all over the ground, there were old tires, there were tractor trailers full of old tires, there was junk vehicles there, and I just drove by and I thought, gosh, I'd like to stop and write an article and say, who's enforcing the rules if they exist? And if they don't exist, they need to be written. And if somebody is employed by the town to enforce rules, I almost feel like that person should be exchanged, because I watched it for two years and said, that can't be the specs that we allow for an automotive repair facility to look like that. So, my question is, will anything change if we just moved the words around, that I could open up a repair facility and run it like the one on 18 and 79? It's an eyesore. And again, we didn't fix it, somebody kicked them out. So, I would like someone to speak to that about why that was allowed to run that long, looking that terrible, and say it still meets the specs, if you will. Thank you.
Is that a question you, yeah, is that a question you wish to have answered, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
To be succinct, how did a facility that was run that poorly and looked that much of an eyesore be enabled to run for years like that? Is it because we didn't have the rules, or we didn't have the enforcement of the rules?
Anyone care to answer that question? Mr. Powerly?
I would actually defer it to Nate Darling, because certainly they were cited many times. Department of Environmental Protection was there. Everyone's been there, attempting to get them to clean up that site. Thank God, it's been sold. So, but if you want a specific answer, Nate had cited them many times. Department of Environmental Protection had cited them many times. So, if you want to explain that, Nate.
Go ahead, Nate.
So, I can tell you that that was deemed a pre-existing non-conforming structure in use, I believe he's talking about the tire depot there on 18 and 79. That was there, obviously, before I got into the Building Commission's seat. But I have worked with Conservation, Board of Health, DEP on resolving the issues. It has been an eyesore, but we've been doing the best we could to mitigate that, and to John's point, it's been sold now, and it is being cleaned up.
Thank you. So, it wasn't being ignored?
No, it wasn't being ignored.
Mr. Piazecchi?
Dave Piazecchi, Old Main Street. Are there any, are there any particular businesses that we have in mind that forgot to this article presently?
Is this for a particular problem, or is this simply cleaning up what we missed? Go.
So, I believe this was, this is cleaning up something we missed, and Special Permit Granting Authority, it used to say all districts, we cleared that up. It's supposed to be in a business district only. When we looked at industrial zones, there's always been concerns of traffic flow. We didn't feel a filling station should be in an industrial zone. So, there's no specific business in mind for this particular article.
Thank you. Answer your question, Mr. Piazecchi?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mark Stone, Highland Road. I've been here for two years, and to that gentleman's point earlier, not to mention the police station, some other eyesores in the community on 18, so I've been here. I don't see a strategy to do anything since I've been here. So, what is the strategy for that building also?
Well, we're getting off, we're getting off the topic.
But it's true. See, it falls back in the same position.
I understand that, and maybe that question is best brought up to the selectman at the selectman's meeting, but we're talking about whether we want to change this or don't change this, and he's indicated that they do things relative to trying to enforce it. It's very, very difficult, but anyone here want to answer the gentleman? I think we're off the beaten track, but.
Not really.
Okay.
It falls back to the same thing, though.
I don't want to say I'm shutting you up, but we're off the topic.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Seeing no fir-, come on down.
Doreen McLeod. I'm still a little confused. Is this so that we can prevent gas stations from being built in Lakeville, so that I don't drive downtown and all of a sudden there's a filling station there with so many other filling stations within a five-mile radius? Is that the plan from the planning board to keep Lakeville looking nice without yet another gas station? And I don't think it's forward-thinking to put gas stations up anymore, because everyone's trying to go to electric cars, so if you're looking forward to the next 20 or 30 years, building a gas station might not be
Well, okay.
A long-term plan, in my opinion.
All right, I'll try and answer your question. Nate?
So, this article doesn't specifically allow any additional places for a filling station to be located. It actually retracts the area in which they could be located.
Diminishes the ability to go in.
It would be more restrictive.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, you're not on. Okay. Anyone else? Seeing no one else, we have a two-thirds vote required, and we're going to have to count. All in favor of Article nine, please raise your cards and keep them up.
Forty-thirty-five.
Thirty-five?
Forty-two.
Forty-two?
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six, thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to Article nine, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Thank you.
Zero.
Thank you.
Zero.
Zero, thank you. The vote is 133 to zero. I declare unanimously passed. Thank you, Mr. Darling. Article 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw for adult marijuana retailer. Lakeville Zoning Districts, Section 4.1.3, Industrial Uses. Change adult-use marijuana retailers from SP to no. Section 7.4.6, Specific Uses by Special Permit. Adult marijuana establishments and retail marijuana retailers. Delete all references to marijuana retailers in Section A through G.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee recommends not approving.
Does not approve?
Does not approve.
Thank you. Mr. LaCamera, you have first shot.
Thank you. First of all, I want to make sure that it's clear that the proposed zoning change does not affect medical marijuana or cultivation and any revenues associated with it. It only affects retail marijuana sales. So, why did we bring this petition forward? There was three reasons for the petition. First reason, even though the selectmen told us at the annual town meeting they were going to give us a choice, it was their choice to include in our article to allow recreational marijuana. Sales in all industrial areas in town, and not to give the voters a choice to ban recreational marijuana. At a March 7th, selectman's meeting with the planning board, the Board of Appeals, the Board of Health, and the zoning enforcement officer, the selectmen wanted their opinions on zoning articles to include at the town meeting for recreational marijuana. All the boards suggested that, except for the selectman, all the boards suggested that we have multiple articles, including an overlay district restricting the location of retail stores, and an article to outright ban recreational marijuana. The zoning enforcement officer recommended an overlay district on Route 44 near the Taunton Line. At a public meeting, meeting about recreational marijuana held by the selectmen, everybody at the meeting recommended, and they were very concerned about banning recreational marijuana, because it was, it was an area that everybody felt uncomfortable with. They didn't feel uncomfortable with medical marijuana nor cultivation. At the 411 selectman's meeting, town council presented multiple articles, including an article to ban recreational marijuana. Even, even though the multiple boards suggested an article to ban recreational marijuana, the Board of Selectmen decided not to put the article on town meeting, even though the town council had presented it to the board as an option. The selectmen were only interested in the revenue and not allowing the voters to vote on banning recreational marijuana. The selectmen said if the voters want to ban recreational marijuana, they can put together a petition. There was only one problem. The warrant article, warrant article for the annual town meeting was closed. The Warren article for the annual town meeting was closed and it required to have a public hearing with the planning board, and there wasn't enough time before the town meeting. There are at least 110 communities that have banned recreational marijuana, including Acushnet in Bridgewater, East Bridgewater, Frehingham, Freetown, Hanover, Mattapoisett, I'm only reading the ones around us, Rainham, West Bridgewater, Westport, Acushnet, Fairhaven, Rochester, and Carver have all put moratoriums on it. Easton has banned it. Moon has banned it. Chatham has banned it. Mashpee has banned it. The problem is that we weren't even given the chance to vote because the selectmen wouldn't allow the article to be on town meeting. All those other towns had the option to vote. We did not have that option to vote. The second reason for the petition was it was obvious that people at the meeting were confused and weren't sure what they were voting for. They were told, if you don't vote for the zoning article, it can go anywhere. That's not true. We're going to lose a significant amount of revenue, and if we don't vote this article, then we won't receive all this revenue. That's questionable and not true. We have a $1 million deficit and we'll have to vote for an override if we don't vote for this recreational marijuana. Not true. Town council said, since an application was submitted to the Cannabis Commission would have to allow recreational marijuana. That was not true either. It has to be approved by town meeting and it also has to be approved by the planning board. Reason number three, all industrial areas. What that article did was allow recreational marijuana in all industrial areas in town. That's over 1,200 acres of land. It includes the town industrial park off Bedford Street and Route 79 and Rhode Island Road. It includes the intersection of Crooked Lane and Route 18. It includes Highland Road right down the street here from the high school and near Baker Lane and Sherwood Lane. It includes Route 44 near Totten and Middleborough Lines. It includes the intersection of Route 18 and 105. And across the street on Main Street, that includes 200 apartments, the tea station, and a new development of about 165 units for the elderly and family housing. Just in that area alone, there was at least 1,000 people who live or will live in that area and 1,000 people who take the tea every day. You weren't given the chance to vote at the annual town meeting. Now you can have your say. There's a chance to vote this bylaw to ban recreational marijuana until the town figures out really what the right thing to do. I ask you to please support this article. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the planning board have a hearing on this?
Yes, we did have a hearing on November 8th, 2018, and voted to recommend approval of the petition. The vote was three aye, one nay, and one abstention.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak to the article?
Mr. Moderator, I would.
Well, he jumped up before you said something. You'll be next. Go.
I'll defer to Mitzi.
Okay. Mitzi?
You know, just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were said with regard to some of the reasons why there was no article on the annual town meeting. So we did hold a hearing. It wasn't a public hearing, but we held a hearing with the Board of Health, with the planning board, the zoning board, pretty much all the boards and commissions. It was an open meeting that was allowed to be held for everybody so we could consider the options that were presented in front of us. I think it's important to note that, and we can kind of move through some of these items, but zoning for marijuana is different from most other zoning uses that the state has authorized in that if you do not zone something to go somewhere, it can go there by right and it will go to the most likely or most relevant zone in terms of if it's retail, we'd be able to go in the business district where we have retailers. What we had talked about at that meeting was that, yes, if there was a ban that somebody wanted to put forth, that we would certainly bring that forth then at this town meeting. And that was because, as we talked about at the annual town meeting in June, there's also a provision that a host community agreement needs to be signed by the Board of Selectmen, which if that is not signed, then there can be no marijuana retailers, cultivators, anybody who's in the marijuana business cannot actually operate without a signed host community agreement. So we stated here at the annual town meeting, when people did finally come forward to express the fact that they did want to have a ban, which we really did not hear that information at those meetings, although town council did create and give us bylaws that were for all types of zoning that we could have had, including marijuana overlay districts, as well as the ability to limit the number of marijuana establishments and retailers, which is allowed to be done as well, to 20% of the total liquor licenses that we have in the town. So we contemplated those items as well. At the annual town meeting, two of the selectmen stated specifically that we would not sign a host community agreement if people did not support the article that did pass at the June town meeting. Now, from that perspective, the article did pass, which allowed for retailers. But if the article did not pass, and the Board of Selectmen then, who agreed that they would not sign a host community agreement, it made us have more time to be able to contemplate that. So a couple of things related to the sales and the revenue related to the retailers. When we negotiated those host community agreements after town meeting voted in approval of marijuana retailers at the June town meeting, we negotiated host community agreements with the two applicants that are looking to do adult-use retail along with their cultivation and medical in the industrial park, that we contemplated the fact that they were allowed under that zoning to be able to sell retail marijuana. And so the host community agreements were negotiated with that in mind. So if that is not allowed, then what happens is the local option tax that the town meeting did approve, which is 3% on the gross sales of retail products, that would not be coming to the town of Lakeville. In addition to that, 3% for the mitigation fees would not be coming to the town of Lakeville. And instead, the only revenue that we would be receiving is $25 per pound, which is significantly less than 3% of the total revenue on what they would be selling here from a wholesale price. We did not contemplate that in the host community agreement because we were negotiating the entirety of the package, which included retail sales. If there is a desire to do an overlay district, again, if that is something that is desired by town meeting, the host community agreement dictates whether or not we actually would be able to have those establishments in town.
Please raise your hands. How many people understood that? Thank you. Less than half.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I'd just like to respond to Nelson.
Yes.
Please. I just want to be clear on the meeting that was held on March 7th, that the planning board, the Board of Appeals, and the Board of Health suggested, all boards suggested that we have multiple articles to be put on the annual town meeting. Is that correct?
Is that correct?
I don't recall if that was where it went from there. I know we had a meeting just to talk about the options.
Okay. I mean, I'll ask Brian when I'm done. But so they all talked about multiple options, including the banning, including overlay districts, including the bylaw, and so forth and so on. All of that information was put together by town council, correct? Those options?
Yeah. Yes.
All right. So then the Board of Selectmen decided on their own not to bring those articles forward, just to bring the article to allow retail marijuana in town.
There were multiple articles that were brought forward at town meeting?
No, I'm talking about the zoning. I'm talking about the zoning itself.
Right. For retail adult use, because at the time, we did not hear enough opposition. But when we did hear opposition at town meeting, that was when we said that we would not sign host community agreements, which again supersedes essentially the zoning. So if town meeting, at the annual town meeting, did not want that and the article failed, that we would not sign a host community agreement and we pledged that we'd bring it back at the fall town meeting.
Just one more. Even though all the other boards in town, the zoning board, the Board of Appeals, the Board of Health, all recommended that we have multiple articles and brought to town meeting. I don't know what meeting you were at, but I heard a lot of concerns at the April 4th meeting about recreational marijuana and they wanted to address it. And you had the articles to bring it to town meeting and you didn't, and that was your decision.
Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Nelson Pratt, this is really an unusual situation for me because I don't ever remember being at a town meeting where we've attempted to do something different than we did at the previous town meeting. But having said that, I asked myself, how did we get here tonight with this particular article? And for me, just as a point of information, this isn't an ethical, moral, or emotional issue with regard to selling marijuana. I went to college in the early and mid-'70s and believe me, I need to say no more about the use of marijuana. However, I don't have a problem with it, basically. But I do have a problem with some of the things that Rich brought up in terms of the reasons why this citizens' petition came forward. I was at the June town meeting. I sat here like however many people that are here did. Those that went here won't appreciate the confusion that was created that night with a multitude of questions, answers. Don't vote for this because that'll happen. If you want this, don't vote for that. Vote this way. There were a variety of things that we were told. Vote this way if you want this. Don't vote that. It was confusing for a lot of folks, myself included, to be perfectly honest with you. So from my perspective, there is a significant level, or there was a significant level of confusion that night in what people were voting for. I happened to actually talk to a couple of guys subsequent to that, and they basically told me, I don't know what the heck I was voting for. So it's real. I think also there's significant misunderstanding on the revenue side of this equation. And I want to make an attempt tonight, if I could, with your permission, Mr. Moderator, to try and walk through that. And I'm sure if I'm making mistakes along the way, my friends on the Board of Selectmen will clarify me and tell you to tell me that I'm wrong. So I think maybe if you could give me in a minute the opportunity to do that. I have specific questions for the folks up on the stage, but before we get there, with your permission, if I could just sort of walk through my understanding of what this is and what this isn't. I think that-
What is this? Wait a minute, before you start. What this is and what this isn't? Are you talking about this article?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Yeah. So what this isn't is anything to do with medical marijuana. Nothing to do with that at all. What this also isn't, going back to the June meeting, is it's got nothing to do with Article 10 that was approved. Article 10 is for all the ancillary businesses under that recreational marijuana umbrella, if you will. Okay? And I think from my perspective, folks may want to get a pencil and paper out here because this gets kind of interesting. Article 10, when you think about recreational marijuana, I look at it as two silos. Silo from Article 9 in June and silo from Article 10 in June. One is selling recreational marijuana retail. That's all that is. The other is all the other businesses that could come under that recreational marijuana umbrella that we've allowed, we voted for, and quite in favor of. And I assume the selectmen are moving forward with the companies to make those things happen. What those other issues are in that silo are things like cultivation, production, research, and also wholesale. What's grown in Lakeville doesn't get sold in Lakeville necessarily. What's grown in Lakeville, for the most part, gets shipped out of Lakeville and sold to other dispensaries. That's all allowed under that other silo of business. We've agreed to that. There's been no debate about that, pretty much no debate about that. What both companies who we're talking to, Nature's Remedy and Tricom, have said with regard to that silo of business is, Nature's Remedy has told us that between 80 and 90% of what they grow will be shipped out of Lakeville. It won't be sold here. It'll be wholesaled out. Tricom has told us that about 60% of what they grow will be shipped out of Lakeville and wholesaled out. We have, through a host community agreement, an opportunity to make money on that. And the selectmen, I think, have negotiated that at $25 a pound. So whatever's grown is going to equate to, at $25 a pound, will equate to tax revenue to the town. That number, just so we all know, based on the projections of Nature's Remedy, they project, once they get their plants up and growing, let's just assume after year one, because that's sort of the introductory period, that 19,000 pounds will be grown and wholesaled out of Lakeville. What Tricom estimates is that 1,800 pounds will be grown and wholesaled out of Lakeville. Basically, you've got about 21,000 pounds grown in Lakeville at $25 a pound, which will net us $525,000. This article doesn't change that. Nothing changes that. That stays the same. What this does do is it talks about what the confusion, part of the confusion is the revenue associated with the retail portion. And if you would, Mr. Moderator, I've got some questions for some folks up on the desk, on the table here. And with your permission, if I could ask the Finance Committee, because you guys are the numbers guys. You approved the article in June. You did not approve the article to ban it tonight. And I'm assuming that's strictly for financial reasons. I don't know if there's a morality issue or ethical issue with regard to marijuana for you guys or not, egg girls. But my question is, what are your expectations to the town for revenue from retail sales? What are you expecting? Why did you decide what you decide? How much money do you think is coming here?
So it's hard to determine exactly what we're going to end up with. The expectation is that it will be, I mean, it's all a guessing game at this point because we don't know what retail sales ultimately yield.
Well, there are projections of that.
Yeah. But our expectation, part of the Finance Committee's responsibility is to ensure that we're allowing businesses to come in that will generate revenue for the town, and this was just another business. So we didn't necessarily look at specifics or take it under consideration. We consider this a business that will come into town and generate additional revenues that we otherwise don't have. That's the rationale. And for the record, it was not a unanimous decision. It was a two to one. It was a split decision. Yeah.
But you have no projections at all?
We didn't, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't have the numbers. I don't know if somebody else up here has numbers projected.
So-
They don't?
I do.
She does.
Well, I have a question for you in a minute. Just hang on. So to clarify, the Finance Committee has no idea how much money the town can expect from the sale of retail marijuana, but you-
I don't have it in front of me.
Approved and disapproved the two articles.
So that's absolutely not true. So we've looked at the numbers and what we're saying is that we are taking this as a revenue stream. We consider this a revenue stream for the town, and that's how the decision was made on whether or not to approve. So we consider this to be additional revenues that the town does not currently have.
But with no specific range of money?
No. They just simply welcomed it as a stream, but no amount was given.
Okay.
Next question.
Okay. I guess, okay. If I could, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to read a couple pieces from the Cannabis Control Commission as it relates to community host agreements.
Why?
Well, because it has specific reference to what the community host agreement can negotiate as community impact fees and what it can't. And that's part of the revenue base that everybody's been talked to.
Okay.
What I'd like to do, if I could, because I know the law has changed since it was enacted, and if I could, I made a copy of this that I'd like to be able to hand to our town attorney. And maybe as I read it, he could follow it. And then after I read each one, and there's only four of them, he might be able to tell us if that's still right or if it's changed, because I don't know that. So with your permission, if I could hand him a copy-
Fine, fine. This is important. We can't shortchange the discussion. Is this going to take a long time?
Depends on how quick I read, but no, I'll try and get right to the point.
I was just wondering if you'd get to-
No, it's not that.
The essence part.
No, no. Okay, so this is a document from the Cannabis Control Commission, and it's entitled Guidance on Host Community Agreements. And there's four points of it that I want to read, and I'd like our attorney to tell me if they're still in effect. First one says, "In agreement between a-" First one says, "An agreement between a marijuana establishment and a host community may include a community impact fee for the host community, provided, however, that the community impact fee shall be reasonably related to the costs imposed upon the municipality by the operation of the marijuana establishment, and shall not amount to more than three percent of the gross sales of the marijuana establishment, or be effective for longer than five years. Any cost to the city or town imposed by the operation of the marijuana establishment shall be documented and considered a public record and defined by Clause 26, Section 7, Chapter 4." So, I assume that's still current, and I would just ask our attorney to say yes it is or no it isn't.
Town Council? Are you at liberty to give an opinion?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, yes, those provisions are in the general laws as they are written now.
Okay, good. On page two of what I handed you, I highlighted the other thing I'd like to communicate. "To be authorized under the statute and consistent with the decision of law and fees, a community impact fee included in the HCA, which is a host-community agreement, must meet certain legal requirements. Fundamentally, the fee must be voluntary in nature. Furthermore, the fee must be related to the benefit received by the marijuana establishment, which is not received by the general public, and compensate the municipality for the cost of providing the benefit. This benefit must sufficiently, this benefit must be sufficiently specific and special to the marijuana establishments. Assessments characterized as fees that do not meet these requirements risk being regarded as tax, which unless explicitly allowed under Chapter 64H and 64N are prohibited."
Town Council?
Is that still good?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. That highlighted provision is not part of the statute. It appears that this is the Cannabis Control Commission's interpretation of limitations on a community impact fee. I am not aware of any court decisions that have interpreted any such limitation on a municipality to negotiate a fee as opposed to unilaterally impose fees without agreement. So, no, I cannot agree or disagree that this is a correct statement of the law.
Okay, thanks. Next page, or just a couple pages over, just two more quick ones. "The community impact fee must be reasonably related to the costs imposed upon the municipality by the operation of the marijuana establishment or medical marijuana treatment center."
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Again, you know, these provisions are not contained in the law. This is a guidance or position statement of the Cannabis Control Commission, which does not have the force of law or a decision of the court, so I cannot agree or disagree with that position.
Okay, last one. "While some latitude is given to municipalities to plan for their expenses, the municipality must identify the planned specifics to justify the fee. As Section 3D requires," says requires, "it is important that the fees bear some reasonable relation to the cost of providing municipal services or other benefits, and not merely be a fee without designation of its origins or justification of its amounts. Moreover, there must be a proportionality between the cost or impact claimed by the community and the fee required by the marijuana establishments. Municipalities are cautioned against relying on fees that are simply revenue generators in negotiating with marijuana establishments and planning their municipal budgets. These fees may not withstand judicial scrutiny."
Again, Town Council? Same thing.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator, yeah, same thing. Again, you know, this is a position of the Cannabis Control Commission. No court has ruled on this, and we do not know how a court would view an arrangement between a municipality and retailer that's voluntarily negotiated by both parties.
So you're suggesting that the three percent community impact fee doesn't have to have a basis of costs associated with it to justify that fee? Why would it be called a mitigation or impact fee if it did not have a cost associated with it? You know, as this basically says, it does.
He's going to the first one, I think. Is that the first one?
Yes.
Well, yeah.
Yeah. The one that you said was not an interpretation.
Yes, through you, Ms. Moderator. So the limitation of three percent gross revenue is a limitation of the law, so that's the ceiling as to what the host-community agreement can require. The rest of this is, again, the Cannabis Control Commission's interpretation of limitations on how the municipality can negotiate up to that ceiling. And until a court makes a decision as to any such limitations, this interpretation of the Cannabis Control Commission doesn't have any force of law, and I cannot offer an opinion as to whether or not an agreement voluntarily negotiated between two parties would be upheld by a court. That's really up to, you know, the parties to decide how they want to structure their voluntary agreements.
I think what he's saying is that three percent is the limit. The interpretation of what constitutes, how the town justifies that is an opinion. Is that true?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
I wasn't expecting you to say that. Okay, so
Are we done?
I think I'm pretty much done.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, may I address
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
We put you on hold.
Excellent. So one thing I think that needs to be clarified is regardless of mitigation, community impact fees, retail marijuana under what was enacted at the annual town meeting, we elected a local option tax of three percent. So an additional three percent of all retail sales, which is going to be able to go into the general fund for general use without it being mitigation money at all, is what has also been allowed and was provided as an option to town meeting as approved. So I know you talked about revenue projections and what we received from Nature's Remedy and what you explained with regard to the percentage of what would be sold from Tricom versus what would be distributed elsewhere by Tricom. We're looking at approximately three thousand pounds. And three thousand pounds at a retail equivalent of five thousand dollars per pound would generate approximately fifteen million dollars in revenue. At three percent, this is on the local option tax, which is general fund revenues available to be used for anything within the town, would be four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year. And that is not related to mitigation at all. The three percent ceiling on the mitigation is in addition to that. The twenty-five dollars per pound that was negotiated under the host-community agreements also is designated in the host-community agreement as an agreement not to be used or considered as an impact fee. The guidance that was referred to is actually the draft guidance that came out from the Cannabis Control Commission for which they were seeking public comment on how and why the community impact fees and what they should be used for. But that also specifies a couple of different elements in there of examples of things that could be used as mitigation money, which also includes traffic, intersection design studies, some roadway impairments, environmental impact, stormwater, wastewater studies, public safety, personnel, and overtime costs, additional substance abuse prevention programming during some of the years of operation. So there's certainly elements that they've been talking about of things that they would allow with that three percent, but I think what you need to look at from the adult-use side and the retail side is that we would be receiving three percent of the retail revenue, which is general fund revenue, has nothing to do with the impact fee. If you do vote against, or if you vote in favor of the ban, if you vote in favor of this article, that money would not be available because there is no additional local option tax for any other wholesale sales. Additionally, with regard to the twenty-five dollars per pound, and if it does get to the five-hundred-thousand dollars, that is approximately one percent of their wholesale sales. Whereas otherwise, the community impact fee, had we not negotiated the host-community agreement because we didn't believe we would have retail sales, we could have put that up to three percent instead of twenty-five dollars per pound. And that would, again, be the maximum that would be allowed for reimbursement for mitigation.
Thank you, yes, sir.
Yes, Bob Pelucci from the Board of Health. My other two board members are here. I just want to clarify, I don't believe we ever voted to ban this. You know, we have actually put some very strict restrictions on, as far as the Board of Health, regulations above the state. But once it became law, and I think at the last town meeting, when I was standing out back talking to some of the police officers, I mean, you know, the conversation was kind of like, you know, people are acting like there's not a part in town, and it's been legal. It's, when they pull over people, it's in the cars, it's legal. So I personally went forward and voted for this, not because I do it, and, you know, my kids better not. I mean, it's not something that I'm in favor of, but it's legal. It's happening. I mean, Cahan's is going to open one. And I, without researching this a lot, I believed all the negative things people said here. I believed that we were going to need possibly more police officers because it's just like if we banned liquor bars in Lakeville. See, most of you that are bar at one point or another, you know, if they closed them all in Lakeville, people would go to Middleborough or to Nephews or some other place, drive through Lakeville, would still want the police, would still want the stops. So I'm just looking at it that if we're going to have this, it's legal, we might as well get some money to deal with these issues that are going to come from it instead of just, you know, raising our taxes by four more cups of coffee a day or whatever the new equation will be when they break it down. And, you know, people seem to always come up here with how many cups of coffee and override is or something is. So, I'm pretty sure I'm not going to get asked if people understand where I'm coming from because, you know, whether that was appropriate or not, that is, you know, it's that simple. We passed it. I was at the meetings. The Selectmen said, right at the meeting at the library, that if the people wanted to get it on, they had, they were able to bring it up as an option. They also, after the last town meeting, a lot of people, the two of the Selectmen did commit, they said if it didn't pass, they would not sign host agreements until the next meeting, okay? But it passed by, I think it was around seventy percent. So all the people that said they broke their word to us, they didn't. If you go back and watch it, you know, the consensus was it passed by seventy percent. So, I mean, I just think a lot of stuff's getting thrown around out here. Some of it's not factual. Morally, I'm against it, but a lot of people are probably morally against drinking. So that's where I'm coming from, but if my board members remember voting to ban it, they can, the vote here, they can correct me. But I don't think we ever did, but
Thank you.
That's just what I have to say.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Who said Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Yes, I'd like to just quickly speak to the retail aspect of it and then speak to about the three companies that are involved. The retail aspect, if we ban that, that's where the lion's share of income can come. So I'd hate to see us pass that up. So I voted against legalizing marijuana in the state, and I've said that before, but I don't want to pass up the million dollars' worth of revenue as we move down the highway. That can be used for good, substantial projects in the town. But the three companies that we dealt with, we originally started out with an overlay district idea at Five Harding Street and Forty-four. We didn't round up much support for that. It was not an easy process to do an overlay district. So we ended up picking the industrial area. But the three companies that are involved currently, and there's been other companies, but the three companies that have invested into the town are Tricom Health, which is buying the old Tracy Import Building. They held a, Cannabis Commission makes those companies hold public forums so they can talk to the people about their concerns. Not one person went to the Tricom one, other than the landlord or the owner of Tracy Imports simply to see if anyone else was going to show up. So we certainly talked about water issues, income issues. We talked about hiring employees. So those are my focus, and no one showed up at that meeting. Nature's Remedy, which once again held a public hearing a short time ago, no one showed up at that meeting. And they have taken over a sublease of about fifty thousand square feet of Kenneth Welsh Drive in one of the cold storage buildings. Bonneville Farms, which was one of our original people that we were looking forward to putting on Harding Street, Route Forty-four, that didn't work out for zoning reasons. They ended up buying the Vital Med Building in the industrial park, which was not built a long time ago, perhaps ten years ago, and was ultimately sold, and the building, although it was relatively new, was vacant. So instead of fighting zoning issues, they decided to buy the Vital Med Building. And they have entirely gutted that building. I certainly would ask you folks, if you're interested, to go buy these buildings. So there's three people that are on Kenneth Welsh Drive, and that's somewhat where they were, I'll call it, driven to. And so I can see that there's a certain undercurrent that would like to let the other things go but ban the recreational, and the recreational really is where the money is. And I'm convinced that these people have invested millions and millions of dollars already into these facilities. We also went on record, because they kept talking about the two Selectmen that would bring the article forward. Well, I was the dissenting one because I simply said, if someone knocked on the door of Talbot's, which was an enormous building, and said, "By the way, I want to grow marijuana", and there's a revenue stream of two million dollars to the town, I would not turn that away. I would encourage, as the Finance Committee has done, a revenue stream of businesses, whether you like the business or not. If there was a liquor manufacturer there, maybe people wouldn't want that. So I consider these people to substantially improve the buildings that were in there. I think those are some of my main issues. Once again, I would not limit it. But I did say I would limit it to talking to future people unless they had a business plan that was equal to or bigger than the three people that we're dealing with. So I think what you have is three people that have invested, invested or will invest a tremendous amount of money into the town, and I'd like to continue with those three people and not do any recreational ban. Thank you.
Yes?
Dave Pierseki again. What will we do for money in the town of Lakeville? Anything for money? As long as it raises money, we're for it. Is that right? Regardless of what happens to our kids or our community. There are numerous communities in the area that have turned it down. Maybe they've got other values other than money. These host agreements, who agrees to the host agreement? Is it the Selectmen?
The Selectmen do, and those are all held in public meetings. Right. So if I say the tactic of they can go anywhere in an industrial area, they can only go there if there's a host-community agreement. And so a lot of that is restricted, in my mind, that it needs a host-community agreement. I'm not going to put it on Crooked Lane.
No, I don't care.
That type of thing, right.
If you've got it in Lakeville, and the reason why you've got it in Lakeville is because it's going to bring some money for us so we can reduce our taxes, we're all for it. I'm not all for it. I'm willing to pay a few more bucks in taxes in order to keep something that's, I can't see how it's beneficial to us. Medical marijuana is great. It serves its purpose, as do numerous drugs.
But to answer it, the Selectmen are responsible for the host-community agreement held in public.
Yeah, well, that concerns me. A couple articles that were in the papers recently. One talks about what it's going to cost us for our auto insurance in the state of Massachusetts. Massachusetts drivers can expect to see their auto insurance rates go up thanks to legalized pot, even if they don't smoke it. So I'm going to be paying an increase in my insurance costs because other people think marijuana is good. I don't. It's up to four to six percent it's going to increase. Accidents, and the reason for that, obviously, is because if you're driving under the influence of the drugs, of the marijuana, the cannabis, of the, the drugs, of the marijuana, the cannabis, then you're impaired. And if you're impaired, you're more likely to have accidents, which incur costs, which drives up your insurance, among other things. Hopefully, my family doesn't get killed in an accident from someone who's drinking high. We can't even measure the marijuana as we can alcohol and various other things. Another study recently in the papers was a doctor from Mass General Center of Addiction, and she's talking about the impairment to children who get this, youngsters who get this. And for those of us who think that maybe youngsters don't get it, they're talking about middle school kids and high school kids who have access to it, and the more access to it, I think, the more problems there are. They suffer memory loss, and it's pretty much proven that the memory loss is caused by the cannabis, by the marijuana, because the memory loss recuperates some when they do no, no longer use the marijuana. One other item that I thought was interesting is that the recreational marijuana, they make it in, it's edible, so you can have it in all kinds of shapes and sizes, and for some reason, they make some of these shapes and sizes very attractive to younger people, maybe to get them attached to the marijuana. Lemon squares, cookies, cake pops. It was interesting that the Commissioner, Shailene Title, said that when I heard cake pops, and probably all of us who have young children, it did give us pause. But then the CCC immediately after that approved 10 other provisional licenses yesterday. This was two weeks ago in the newspaper. So, the point is, yes, we can make some money off of marijuana. Medical marijuana is fine. Recreational marijuana, if it's going to impair people and get us involved in more things that we don't need and health issues that we don't need, maybe some of the money we can make off of this as a town can go to helping those people who have problems as a result of it. So, live with it.
Thank you. Who was next? You were.
I believe I was. Mr. Moderator, I have one concern, and that's, I heard Mitzi say that the retail was about $450,000 or something, and then I heard Mr. Powley say something about $1 million. So, just the retail part of it, at $5,000 a pound, how much are we expecting to get?
Yeah, so, to clarify that, so there's two components to retail stores. So, there's one, which is the local option tax, and that would be, if I'm saying $15 million roughly, although that's, I think, a conservative estimate of retail sales of two retail establishments, would be $450,000. That's on the local option tax, which goes right into the general fund, can be used for anything. In addition to that is the 3% mitigation money on top of that, which is another $450,000. So, that's what can be used to offset the costs that we're just previously addressed in terms of those articles of education to our students, work in the schools, additional fire personnel, additional police personnel, all of those costs. So, that would be another $450,000 on top of that, along with the $25 per pound of everything else that's being sold on the cultivation side. But that's, but from the retail perspective, if you're looking at $15 million of sales, the equivalent is 6%. Again, 3% for mitigation, 3% for whatever you want to use it for.
Okay, most of the feedback I've seen on the internet locally is that if we don't pass the adult retail marijuana, that it will probably result in us, if we don't have that income, in going for an override. And this question through the moderator to the selectman is, for something that's this important, why didn't the selectmen consider a referendum on this subject rather than going ahead? If I were the selectman, I would have wanted to have as many people in the boat as possible in making such a controversial decision. And you guys work really hard to balance the budget, and it's not very often a revenue stream comes along. But for something that has so many variables with regard to how people feel about it, why wouldn't you consider a referendum on the subject?
Yes?
To, to address that, the Cannabis Control Commission actually has a two-step process by which a town can either ban, really can ban marijuana. And so, a referendum vote is required. In a town that voted yes on question four, Lakeville voted no on question four, so we bring it to town meeting. So, that, that kind of answers that question, I think. With regard to exactly how we're moving forward on the, the override question, per se, is that this is something that nobody's talking about in override this year. Nobody's talking about it. But looking at, from a square footage perspective, this would be the single largest taxpayer that the town has, per square foot. So, looking at it from the future and looking to try to see how we're going to try to better our town, otherwise, you know, every five or six years or so, we typically look at it and say we may have a budgetary crisis. This would help alleviate that going forward. It is, it is about the revenue, and I have not, you know, ever taken a different stance from that from the beginning. But the retail component to the adult-use marijuana does provide the largest amount of revenue that the town has seen per square foot of a taxpayer.
Thank you. Before we go any further, does anyone, I, I don't mind picking on people to talk, but we need new information. If it's the same stuff in different words, it doesn't make much sense, and it keeps us kind of going around in a loop. So, if anyone wishes to speak, I have no problem at all, but make it new information. Sir?
Mr. Moderator, Christopher Plonka, Baker Lane. Through you to the selectmen. Selectman Hollenbeck, you quoted a, some of your revenue projections based on $5,000 a pound, correct?
Yes.
Where did you get that number from?
So, that came from Nature's Remedy, but also too, if you look at what the, the medical sales are at a retail level, typically they're between $350 and $450 per ounce. And so, we're looking at about $5,000 per pound on the retail side.
Because I have some numbers, I've done some research. And currently in Colorado, the price per pound is about $1,200 a pound. It was never higher than $1,500 a pound. Today, it was legalized, and it's projected to go down to $800 a pound next year, and potentially bottom out within a year or two at $600 a pound, which is going to significantly impact your local option tax and mitigation percentages, correct? If that $5,000 is not an accurate number?
No, that's incorrect. I believe your numbers are on a wholesale price, as opposed to a retail price. So, what happens as well is every state has a different model by which they've rolled out their cannabis laws. And so, as you look to each state and how the, the markets actually mature, and prices do settle over time, but from the retail perspective, I think you're looking at a wholesale price. Because in Colorado right now, if you do go into a retail dispensary, the one ounce of product is approximately $225 per pound. If you look to Oregon, it's a little bit less than that. You look to Michigan, somewhere around $250 a pound. You look to Massachusetts, you go into the medical stores, and they're about 450, $350 to $450 a pound. What happens is it real, an ounce, sorry, not per pound. What happens is when you actually start to saturate the market with additional retailers versus cultivators, then the prices do settle in a, a specific supply and demand economic model.
Correct. Settle in mean going down, which means if these local impact taxes are only going to go down.
So, in the state of Nevada, actually, that's a place where the prices actually have gone up. So, it really depends upon the state and the rules and regulations that are enacted within that state. We don't know where Massachusetts' market will actually end up, but certainly it's something where if we don't play and we don't participate, we certainly won't be sharing in any of the revenue.
Okay, so, let's be clear, that this article only addresses the recreational, not the wholesale cultivation and distribution. So, again, when you throw out the numbers, a million dollars a year, we're talking roughly half of that is the wholesale cultivation number, correct? That we're going to receive?
No, that's incorrect.
Can you clarify?
That's in addition to that. So, the, the issue is the retail sales component. So, roughly on $15 million, again, projections, $15 million of retail sales, we would be looking at a 3% local option tax, which is $450, sorry, $450,000. And then we would be looking at an additional community impact fee of $450,000. In addition to that, we would have the cultivation fee, which would be $25 per pound, which was estimated at one point at $500,000. So, there are two different components. So, you're looking at $900,000 and $500, uh, $500,000. Again, if we had negotiated, had we known that there was no retail option, we could have moved up that wholesale from $25 a pound to 3%. So, roughly, right now, if you're looking at $2,500 a pound for a wholesale price, that we would have been able to get approximately 3% on that, so we would have been looking at $1.5 million on the cultivation side. But we did not negotiate those agreements...
I understand, yep.
...in contemplation of that, because we had retail sales.
Right. But again, to clarify, that this article would only eliminate the local option tax and the mitigation tax revenues, not the cultivation.
That would eliminate the 3% on the retail sales, as well as the 3% on the mitigation on the retail sales.
Correct.
Which is a, a larger majority of the revenue.
Right. Thank you.
Sir, identify yourself, please.
Evening, Brian Dale, Doris Pond Drive. I've got two clarifying questions, since there's been a lot of discussion. I just want to make sure that I understand what I'm voting for before we get there, and then I've just got a couple of statements after the fact. May I?
You want to know, okay. Throw your question out, and we'll see what happens.
Article laid earlier had a really nice chart of, here's the before and the after of what we're voting on. I'd suggest any future zoning change articles, we do the same, because this one just says we're striking it from special permit to none, but not saying, do other, do any other zones currently allow for retail usage? Or is industrial the only one, and we're getting rid of it and effectively creating a ban? Okay, excellent. So, I just want to make sure that was stated, because I don't think it was clear yet, were there any other zones that still had that? So, it just seems like we're bringing forward a zoning change to make a ban. So, using the earlier gentleman's figures of product cultivated and shipped out of Lakeville, it sounded like, from his math, and I apologize if I quote your numbers wrong, between 20 to 30% and 40% of product from each aforementioned cultivator would be sold in town and be taxable. It may sound a little silly, but if the figures Mitzi mentioned earlier were to come to fruition for the general funding come, maybe everybody upset about the condition of Rhode Island Road would have a smoother ride to work and be bitching less on Facebook. Many have expressed a valid concern about the effects of their children and families, but access to the product is a foregone conclusion, because the Commonwealth has already made it legal. It's coming. It's here. We already have access to it. So, if you want to essentially give up any mitigation funds to our communities around us, go ahead, that's your choice. Otherwise, we could take that money and try to put it towards helping our families and childrens that perhaps do end up with addiction or don't understand what the product is going to do to them. If you want to give up those funds, go right ahead. That's your choice. There's an opportunity tonight to start the process to expand the board of selectmen to five people. So, if you've come here and stood at the mic, and multiple people have tonight, that say, "I don't believe", or I don't, you know, "It doesn't make me feel good that they're in charge of the host community agreements", you get a chance to run for a board seat, if that goes through. So, become part of the solution if you want to, and stop, stop putting it all on them. If we do zone out industrial now and come back later and say, "Hey, you know what? We're okay with it. Let's open up to commercial now." But after the companies are already running in the industrial zones for medical, you might end up with more facilities that are selling the stuff, instead of having it co-located under one roof. So, just some food for thought, and I want to make sure I understood what I'm voting for when we get there, eventually, maybe.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? Oh, sorry.
I, I wanted to get more off the floor first. Yes?
Barbara Mankowski, Planning Board. I'm from Johnson Drive here in Lakeville. So, a couple of things I just want to bring up. I am also a volunteer, just like the majority of you up here on the stage, and thank you for your service, because it's an incredible amount of time that goes into this process. We have had many, many meetings on this. I want to make a big clarification. There's been discussion about banning recreational marijuana. That is not the discussion. That boat has sailed. It's legal in the state of Massachusetts. What we're talking about today is strictly banning retail sales, not recreational use, retail sales. I just wanted to make that clarification.
Is anyone over here?
Chris Pratt, 133 Hollen Road, and I'm also a member of the Board of Health. Just to concur with Bob when he spoke earlier, we did not speak out in favor, against the retail sales. I'm also not in favor of smoking. I'm not a fan of it, but it is here, and we should make some money off of it. In this moral question, you know, if we want to vote to get rid of this, I think we should get rid of all the liquor stores in town, too, because that's 10 times worse than this marijuana thing, and I don't know what the problem is. And then, the other thing is, if we do vote to ban the retail sales, I had a question for the board, whether some of these companies may decide not to open up here at all, and will lose even more sales.
We'll come back.
Dick Nichols, Melbourne Street. I had done some numbers, but I based mine on 300,000, because that's a number that I had heard from before. So, when we take the, the 3% of that, you know, we, we come down to $54.34 per household, basically. And what I based this on was a tax bill of approximately $5,000 for your home. So, that's probably a decent average of what people are paying for the taxes. So, when you come down to it, if you're at 450, well, actually, that probably is going to work out now to just about $6 a month. So, I believe it was Mr. Piazzecki who said, you know, "You're doing it for the money"? Well, that's what I think that the board is trying. If we look at that coming in on the, the retail side, it's not going to impact us that much. It's, it's less than, well, it's just over 1% of our budget. Not a significant amount at all. And, one of the other things Mr. Plonka had brought up was the price drops in Colorado. Well, actually, in Washington and Oregon, it is under $700 now. And that may be a, a wholesale price, but at the same time, it does show a big trend on, it's not going to be the pie in the sky that everybody is touting it to be. Now, Mr. Moderator, I want to bring up this also, and that is that one of the selectmen, Ms. Hollenbeck, is actually a cannabis advisor. That is her job, so obviously she is trying to push this onto us as much as she can. It certainly looks good on her resume. So, I say that what we actually do is vote yes on this, and then at some point down the road, and especially if we get a five-member board, then we could come back and take a better look at it. One of the other things I want to state also is, I work right across the street from Nature's Remedy. Now, they just got into production, and I, I'm not sure when it was that they got their host community agreement. But they had their generators and their, their cooling, that was on site in 2017. Way back then, they had that large investment already there. So, they had to have had some sort of, "Hey, I'll cut your deal somehow here." So...
Wait a minute, wait a minute. You're going too far.
Okay.
Too far. You have no proof. Please?
All right.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to respond to a couple of things.
Before you do, let...
Can the name Selectman respond first? Is that okay?
Yes. Please, Mitzi.
So, a couple of things to clarify. I'll start from the last comment, just to clarify that medical marijuana has been legal and legally zoned in Lakeville since 2000, I believe it was 2014, at this point in time, where we put the zoning in place in 2016. So, anything related to those operations that were in existence in 2017, related to the medical side of what Nature's Remedy was doing. You know, I, I run the Cannabis Advisory Services Practice at my CPA firm. I also work on a number of liquor store clients. I work with restaurants. I understand the State Ethics Commission rules and regulations regarding what I can and cannot do, and what I'm forbidden from doing in terms of a current ban or forever ban. I have no financial interest in any of the operators that would be operating in Lakeville, or anyone in the surrounding communities, even related to the operations where they could be selling to, in their own additional retail locations where they're looking to sell. And certainly, that is something that I, I do take offense to, because I understand that as a CPA, I have a license, and I have ethical requirements there. I also understand my ethical requirements with the state, and I have recused myself from instances, not with regard to this particular industry, but other industries where they may be clients of my firm. These are not clients of my firm, and I clearly understand that. I think one of the things that needs to be clarified that hasn't been brought up either is the fact that we have grandfathered zoning, which in this case, we have a, a concern between what the state's zoning is versus 40A grandfathering, and what would happen with... what the state's zoning is versus 40A grandfathering and what would happen with these operators who actually were operating in reliance and whether or not they'd have standing because the state guidance with regard to zoning would say that the state looks to the town to say, "What was the zoning in place as of the date that the completed application was received by the Cannabis Control Commission?" And that was just acknowledged last week by the Cannabis Control Commission that one of our operators has achieved that milestone. So we don't know. I believe that there could be a lawsuit related to zoning that could happen based upon the fact that these operators have been working towards opening a retail store if this is changed because it was approved at the June Town Meeting.
Mr. Powderly?
Yes. The numbers quoted by the gentleman of being 1%, we have approximately a $20 to $25 million budget in the town. I think at risk is about $1 million. A million dollars is 5% of the $20 million, so it's not 1%. It's closer to 4% to 5%. As far as Mitzi's involvement in the cannabis industry, if you were running a business, whatever it was, if you were running an electronic business, you're going to hire an electrical engineer. I enjoy that Mitzi is what I call better versed on the rules and regulations of marijuana than myself. So I think that's nothing but an asset, and it's certainly a ridiculous insult that you come forward and say, "Oh, my God, she does cannabis." And there's a conflict of interest. It's the most ridiculous statement said tonight. Thank you.
I think now we are at a point where we know everything we ought to know. We have, yes...
I swear I have questions that weren't asked, and I won't take long.
Very well. Make it quick because we've been on this for a long time.
Well, I think it's important to the town.
Well, I think it is, too. But what I'm saying is I don't know too many more facts that we can pop up.
Well, before we vote, certainly I hope the article passes. I hate to sound like a cranky old guy. I think I've turned into one. I've lived too long. And I was surprised to hear about all the surrounding towns that have already banned the retail. That was surprising. I thought, "Oh, my goodness." So we may have an influx of people from other towns because we voted in the retail side of it. And, you know, for 30 years or more, 40 years, I've listened how the tobacco industry has gone from "There's nothing wrong with cigarettes" to "They're bad for you," to "We're going to tax them, and we're going to tax them," blah, blah, blah. And really, I think it's all about the money today, and I think this is again about the money. And I think that's been admitted. This is about money for the town, and we don't want to lose that money. It sounds like we've already got locked up the wholesale side that's going to approximately give us a half a million dollars a year in revenue. Yeah? About that? And it sounds like if we do the retail, we'll pick up another 450 every year, and we'll have the opportunity to have up to another 450 to take care of covering our expenses by opening the retail side. We're not supposed to make profit off the mitigation. We're supposed to cover expenses. So it's misleading to say, "You're going to get 450 and 450." That second 450 on the retail is to cover the cost of someone that convinces the appropriate people, "Hey, we had to hire two more cops, one more fireman, and we had to put on extra whatever." That's what it's for. It's not a profit center. That's not going to add to the bottom line profit. So we're really looking at 500K from wholesale and about 450 from retail. Now, one thing that, and here come the questions, one thing that I heard somebody at the table said, and I appreciate all your work. I don't mean to be disrespectful. I think you're all doing more than I could ever do. There was a conversation about that if we had known back then this particular fact, we would have negotiated the wholesale side differently that could have meant upwards of 1.2, 1.3, 1.4 million dollars a year. I heard that comment made. So to that comment, my question is, can you renegotiate the wholesale side now? And if you can't renegotiate it now, are we locked in forever? Or do we have a timeframe when we're going to renegotiate in three years, five years?
Yeah, it's a five-year agreement. So it's renegotiated after five years.
So we could renegotiate it after five years?
Absolutely.
Got it. And at that point, we know a lot more, and we may be able to cut a sweeter deal for the town. Hopefully. Hopefully. The other question I have is, on the retail side of this, if this article passes, we'll effectively ban the retail sales in town as I understand it. Yeah? Yeah?
That's correct.
If it's banned today, is there anything that would stop us from reversing this a year or two down the road?
No.
No?
We can go back and keep, we can flip-flop. No, because if it fails, then it's two years, but if it...
But you'd have to undo the vote tonight.
You'd have to undo the vote tonight, just like we're trying to undo a vote from prior. So this is not a one-way decision. It could be reversed, and the wholesale side that's getting us a half million a year could really roll into something better if we knew, if things had gone differently. I guess those are my two questions. We can renegotiate the wholesale side in five years, and if we block the retail tonight, there's nothing saying that we can't turn the retail back on in two years, correct?
You could.
Okay.
It's whether or not the operators would actually want to open at that point in time.
It's all about the money.
They'd probably be gone somewhere else.
It's all about money. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further people, let us bring this to a vote. And please make sure you keep your cards up because this requires a two-thirds vote. Counters ready? All in favor of passing Article 10, please raise your cards. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. You may put your cards down. All opposed to Article 10, please raise your cards.
30.
I'm sorry, 22?
22.
22?
30.
30? 29. You may put your cards down, please, and hold. Yeah, they don't even have a majority. Article 10 is defeated. 54 in favor, 81 against.
Can I ask you a question? I move the town will vote to petition the General Court for special legislation notwithstanding Chapter 43B, Section 13 of the general laws or any general or special law to the contrary to request that the town of Lakeville vote to increase its board of selectmen from three members to five members with such increase to be implemented as follows. At the 2019 annual town election, the town will elect three new selectmen to serve with two remaining members of the existing board. Of the new selectmen, one will be elected for a one-year term, one for a two-year term, and one for a three-year term, so that the positions appropriately cycle in accordance to state law. Thereafter, as the term of each selectman ends, his or her successor will be elected for the regular term of three years. In 2019, one position for selectmen will be up for election, and two new positions will be created.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded.
Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee does not approve.
Finance Committee does not approve. Thank you. You may speak to the...
Okay, can I amend it now?
You can amend it now.
Okay, I have an amendment to this, changing to the 2019 or 2020 annual town election. And that is a change to 2019 or 2020 because special legislation has to approve this. So even if it was approved tonight and special legislation doesn't get to do it, it would have to roll over to the next cycle. Okay?
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. A motion has been made and seconded and amended on the date. We now have to discuss the amendment before we go to the direct motion as to whether or not we want to change the date or not change the date. Does anyone want to discuss the amendment? I see no one wanting to do that, so we will vote. Hold on. The amendment, for those of you who are looking at your warrant, you add in, in the middle, it says "at 2019 annual town election." That should read 2019 or 2020. And then down the bottom with the asterisk, "in 2019 or 2020." That's the amendment we're voting on. It's a simple majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. Thank you. You may put them down. It passes by majority vote. We now go to the original motion. Okay? And the as amended.
Okay. So I think my first question would have to be to the Finance Committee. How many members on the Finance Committee? How many members on the...
Five.
Five. So you people, the five members of the Finance Committee, don't think that their job is just as important as your job. There should be five members on the Board of Selectmen. They work hard. It's a lot of hours. They put in a lot of time, and I think they need some help, which is why I brought this forward. I just don't understand the rationale for the Finance Committee saying, "We don't approve this."
So the rationale for me, I mean, we could have 50 people on the Finance Committee. We're not paid. We don't get, there's no benefit...
So this is financial?
It always is for us. There you go. It's always financial.
Because the Selectmen get a stipend now?
We don't get anything.
I get that.
So if the concern is around, "Why is there five of us?", there could be 100 of us.
No, that was, we've decided to have five members of the, obviously, that's in the town bylaws. We have five members on the Finance Committee. So I just wondered what the rationale was for not wanting or supporting five members on the Board of Selectmen, and you're telling me it's money?
Well, it's always money for a Finance Committee.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Yes?
Catherine Goodfellow. Mr. Moderator, I was very interested in this. I met with Darlene, and she was saying that it makes sense that we have greater diversification of responsibilities for the Board of Selectmen. So I was surprised to hear that the Finance Committee wasn't approving of this idea. I did a little research and found out that of the nine towns in Plymouth County that are similarly sized to Lakeville, seven of them have gone to five-person boards. So this is definitely a trend that is happening that's only for Plymouth County. There are quite a few other ones in Bristol County that are near us that have also gone to five-person boards. So if it's really just a financial situation, it seems a little bit of a misdirection because a greater diversification of opinion on the board is a win for Lakeville, and a greater distribution of responsibilities for the board, I would think, is also a win for Lakeville.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
Yes, I must say that I'm quite surprised that the FinCom would use money, the small amount of money that this would talk about, as the sole argument to be opposed to it. I don't understand why that is so. This has been an issue for me for a very long time. Over the 45 years or so that I've been in town, I've seen a great many people be on the Board of Selectmen and work long, arduous hours and do a lot of very difficult work. And I would like to see, although I don't know where the heck you're going to meet, I would like to see that work split up over a larger number of people for some of the reasons that have already been stated. I think we need more people doing more of the work. I think it's too much to ask of three people, period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Yes?
Hi, Amy Conroy, Bittersweet Road. I just, I think it sounds great, the five people. I did have some questions, though, through the moderator. Can the Selectmen tell me when the last time there was a contested election for Selectmen was?
I can certainly answer that because I ran it. So that was when I ran originally for the Board of Selectmen, which was back in 2014. Prior to that, there was one other contested race three years prior to that.
Okay, so if we went to a five-member board and we didn't have five people running, how would that work? Would the Board of Selectmen appoint somebody to fill those seats? What if there was only four, then we'd have ties? How would that work with so many few people running? And I did have a question about who pays for it. Like, is there an extra stipend, or would it be splitting the stipend they have?
Well, let's go one question at a time.
Sorry. We would have to keep having special elections till we got somebody who actually would want to run.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, you had another question.
It was just about the...
The cost.
Who pays for it?
We do.
Like, would there be extra, would you take the stipend now and split it between five people or add additional stipends?
Add.
I think we would add. I don't know.
I mean, it's a FinCom question.
Yeah, we would be adding.
Yeah. You wouldn't want a Selectman sitting next to another Selectman at half-price.
I would. Ms. Moderator?
Yes?
I know, I keep talking. You know, I don't think necessarily that this is a bad thing to study. Typically, what happens if you look at a town when it's looking to move from three to five members is that there's a study committee formed, and it's a governmental study committee to determine what the impacts would be for concerns, you know, such as, "Do you have enough people that are running? Do you have enough people that are willing to volunteer for this position? Do you have, you know, what are the impacts? What are the duties and responsibilities? And what would that look like?" So what the, so the Community Compact Grants are available. The town of Duxbury recently did a study using a Community Compact Grant, which we could apply for next year, which allowed for a study that was done in conjunction with the Division of Local Service. in conjunction with the Division of Local Services to really evaluate, what does that mean? And what's the type of government that would fit best for the town of Lakeville? I think that doing this through a citizen's petition is not the way that I would wanna see it done, notwithstanding the fact that I sit here on the Board of Selectmen, but just from the overall perspective of the unintended consequences that this could bring without doing a full study to determine what the impact would be by having a three-to-five member board. While you do have additional, I guess I would say, additional opinions and you have different people coming to the table, you know, typically would that slow the process down in government even further. But I think those are things that a study committee should be appointed, and a study committee should be determining that. And if that is the way that the study committee felt that that was the way to go, that it should be brought up at town meeting for a vote.
Thank you. Mr. Marshall?
Through you, Ms. Moderator, to Mitzi's comment. This is not an idea that comes from Mars. I mean, lots of towns of our size have five-member boards. I don't think this, the people in this room, or the people in our, our town for that matter, if we put it to a referendum or what have you, I don't think it's above our ability to comprehend the potential impact. Sure, there might be some unintended consequences. There often are, I suspect there will be with the marijuana issue that we, we voted on tonight, and other issues as well. This is not a difficult process. And for me, this has been an issue for decades. And I think we ought to give it very careful consideration.
Thank you.
May I respond?
Let her do it, then you do it.
Yeah, Catherine Goodfellow again. I just wanna speak to that briefly. I'm all about saving money. So I really don't like it when I hear, "Let's spend more money to figure out something that all of the other towns around us have already figured out." According to the Secretary of State's population information, the following towns have gone to five-person boards in Plymouth County. These are just the ones that are within our population. Carver, we have Hanover, Hanson, Hull, Kingston, Middleborough, which actually is higher than we are, and Norwell, and Whitman. Of the towns that have gone in Plymouth County to five-person boards that are larger or smaller than we are, that includes Abington. It also includes, I said Hanover, Hanson, Hull, Kingston, Norwell, Pembroke, Plymouth. We also have Wareham and Whitman. So I really don't think we need to reinvent the wheel here. If we have all of these towns have gone to five-person boards, we probably can draw from them and save ourselves some money.
Mitzi?
Yeah, so, so to that point, or to that, I would have a couple of extra questions, and I would wanna know, how many of those towns did that through a citizen's petition? How many of them went through a process by which they did a study to determine that that was the appropriate size? The concern I have right now is, as we previously voted in Article I, we have a new town administrator that we're beginning to search for as well. So when you look at the entirety of how this government works, sometimes in those towns, when you look to Middleborough, for example, they have a town manager form of government. So when you look at the duties and responsibilities of the town administrator, you would want to consider that when you actually are expanding the board. Because sometimes in certain cases, like in Middleborough, the town manager has a lot more authority than the town administrator does by our own statute. So there's a lot more to consider than just putting this through a citizen's petition to say, "This is exactly where we wanna go." Again, I believe that a study is, is necessary just to make sure that we know what this is, what, what the impacts would be. To the point of spending money on the study, you can apply for a community compact grant for that, under the Best Practices Grant. And in addition to that, it's typically made up of volunteers, again, in the town, where it wouldn't be going out on a formal study to determine this from people who don't know anything about the town of Lakeville. It would actually involve a lot of internal involvement from the people in this community to try to determine what the best form of government is after a study.
Yes, sir.
Mike McCullough, nineteen West Vaughan Street. Just my opinion here, I see all the ads in the paper, or stories in the paper about these open boards that we have, and the Selectmen's races that go unopposed. I think going to a five-person board, if we can't even have competitive races with a three-person board, is gonna create all kinds of problems, and I think lower the caliber of the people that wind up getting these positions to, to serve the town. Excuse me. And I also know that, I know making decisions with people, I could do it much more officially if there's three people working together to make a decision than five people. That's just my two cents, thank you.
Thank you. No further comment? We will move this to a vote. This is a majority vote. I will get a sense of the crowd, and if it's kind of even, we're going to have to count. All in favor of this petition, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to this petition, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down, we're going to count. We're going to do this again. Ready counters? All in favor of Article eleven, please raise your cards.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, thank you, you may put your cards down. All opposed to Article eleven, please raise your cards. Thank you.
Twenty-five.
Thank you.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, thank you. You may put your cards down. Article eleven fails, fifty-three to seventy-three.
You're going for the next one?
Article twelve.
I move the town will vote to petition the General Court for special legis, legislation notwithstanding Chapter thirty-two B of the general laws or any other general or special law to the contrary. Part-time elected officials in the town of Lakeville who should receive a stipend shall not be eligible for participa, participation in the town's contributory health and life insurance benefit plan. But part-time elected officials who receive a stipend and who pay the full monthly cost of the town, plus any administrative costs that may be assessed by the Board of Selectmen, shall be eligible to participate.
Second?
Second.
Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Finance Committee does not approve.
Thank you.
Okay.
Darlene?
I, I have an amendment, but I just wanna, can I speak to that? The Finance Committee first? I, I mean, I wanna say something to them.
You can, you can talk about the general article anytime you want.
Okay, so, this, this is ludicrous, 'cause this is financial. So you don't agree with this, right? Am I, am I, am I understanding that?
We did not approve it.
And, and why? You're supposed to be fiscally responsible for my town.
Yep.
Okay?
So, somebody up here can correct us if we have this wrong, but I think, what I understand, and what we understand this to be, is taking authority away from the Board of Selectmen. So this current board, in terms of who's eligible for healthcare, and in future boards, determining who's eligible for healthcare.
I, I disagree with that, but I, I just wanna say. So what, what's gone on here is that there are three elected boards in town that receive a stipend, and of those three boards in town that receive stipends, they're eligible to participate, eligible for the health insurance benefit. I'm just gonna use that one benefit for now, okay? Now, what came, what came to light was, the school committee came in and said, "We would like a stipend." And the Board of Selectmen said, "Yes." Okay? Now, does that mean that the school committee can then be eligible for health insurance benefit? Selectmen told me, "No, that's not the case." Well, that's not necessarily the way it's gonna go down, because if you think about it, if three boards that get a stipend are eligible for health insurance benefit, and now the fourth board is coming in and they get a stipend, that, that's discrimination. I mean, that, that's not fair. So why not give every elected official in town a stipend, and then everybody can sign up for medical insurance? But in the meantime, I have an amendment to this article, Gordon.
Go.
Okay, so my amendment at the end of that was to read, at the, this would come into, be in effect at the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Well, I didn't, I didn't put a date, you know, I don't want, I don't, if this were to pass tonight, I wouldn't want someone to go home thinking they don't have health insurance. So I had to have an end, a date of some kind down there.
No, I'm, I'm concerned with the wording that you have intended to be.
It was just added to the end.
Hold on.
Okay.
For those of you looking at your warrant, right at the end of Article twelve, after the word "participate", add "to be in effect", I can't read it right. To, at the end of the fiscal year, to, twenty nineteen, June thirtieth, twenty nineteen. And that has been seconded. So, before we go any further, I need her to explain... Wait a minute. We're working on the amendment now, and I need you to explain it.
The reason, the reason for the amendment is there was no end date when I, when this petition went out. So I didn't want, if, if it were, if it were to pass tonight, that somebody would walk out here thinking that they're, lost their health insurance tonight. So I wanted an end date, so the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Any further comment? Mr. Marshall?
It actually speaks to both the amended version and the original version. To the FinCom, and, and again, I, I don't understand how, how you don't support this, but, given your earlier statement, but, how much money would be saved to the town if all of those board members who do take health insurance no longer had that health insurance? How much money would the town save?
I think somebody has figured that out, but I'm not sure it's the Finance Committee.
I can, I can answer that, Bob.
Thank you.
Today, I guess, let me reword it a bit. Back a few weeks ago, it was quoted by the petitioners that there was a hundred and forty-some-odd thousand dollars' worth of, of health insurance plans.
Yeah, I, I have no clue.
But today, it's seventy-two thousand dollars. And I can, and I can explain, I'll, I'll explain that, but the answer to that is it's seventy-two thousand dollars.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes?
Hi, Louise Richard, thirteen Lakeside Ave. I was an employee for Assawam, at Town of Lakeville and then Three Town Region. In order to get your health insurance for retirement, you have to be vested. So how many people really keep that health insurance after, I don't know, I don't wanna say retired? In other words, if I left my job at five years, my insurance does not go with me. I'm vested, I retired, I worked for the town for twenty-four years. So it goes with me. So what I really wanna know is, most volunteers do not stay volunteering for twenty-four years. So do they have to be work, you know, volunteering these seats that you all have?
No, when, when we're no longer a Selectman, we no longer qualify for health insurance.
So it's just like a, just like a regular job?
Yes.
Right?
Yes, we, we don't qualify for that.
All right, thank you.
I can explain some of the numbers, but I'll wait for some questions if you would like.
I, I think, I think the explanation on the number would be easy, John. I'm just curious, at the time this petition was put in, what was the number? What was the true number?
I have no idea.
You do?
I have no idea. Don't, you don't, you don't have to tell me anything.
I can't, I can't believe that.
Here's the, here's the number, let me explain about health benefits.
All right, now's the time.
Let me explain about health benefits. What, what the Selectmen did, certainly there's three boards that have the ability to have health insurance. But what this Board of Selectmen did back a couple of years ago when we negotiated contracts, we, I was the, when I say the lead person on the police and fire, we divvy up who's dealing with what unions are in, in the building. So I was appointed to be the point person, but this is under the direction of the, of the Selectmen. So what, we decided amongst ourselves, in the negotiations, we wanted to go to a fifty-fifty contribution for health. And what that means is that currently, if you were on a network blue family plan, the town would actually pay twenty-two thousand dollars' worth of that contribution. So we've changed that number dramatically, where an employee would be paying about, I, I think it's a six thousand dollars. Now it would be half the amount of money. So the new employees have to do a fifty-fifty payment. But the real thing that was negotiated was an opt-out clause, where the incentive is not to have people take health insurance. So that we offered a opt-out, that is, if you did not take town insurance and you were a single plan, we would give you twenty-five hundred dollars. If you were a family plan, we would give you five thousand dollars. So if I gave you an example of the town's contribution was twenty-two thousand dollars, and you decided to, if it's Bob Marshall and he decide, and the town's paying twenty-two thousand dollars, we offered, Bob, "Bob, if you opt out of our insurance, go on a significant other, get insurance wherever you would like to get it, but you have to have insurance, we'd like to give you a five thousand dollar opt-out." That saves the town seventeen thousand dollars. So we're hopeful that people actually opt out of the insurance. And that's what's really happened with the nine elected, we'll call them part-time, I feel like I'm a full-time employee, but the part-time employees, most of those have opted out. That is, six of the nine people actually have opted out. I won't name names because I think that gets into the personnel file. I can talk about my particular one, because I can disclose that. So there's two people that have family plans, five people that opted out of a family plan, one person opted out of a single plan. One has not requested an opt-out. I can speak to that, because I'm that individual. I don't have town insurance, and I've not requested the opt-out. Probably not because I'm very smart, because it's money that would be in my pocket. So we've incentivized our employees to opt out. That's how we've controlled the cost of health benefits. Two people on a plan, and granted, there's opt-outs. Now, one can say, "Oh my God, they've opted out insurance, they don't need it somewhere else. Let's drop the five thousand dollars." Well, the town's already saving seventeen, we don't wanna take that away. It was part of a, a package deal, if you will. So this is the single board that aggressively went after fifty-fifty in an aggressive opt-out to save the town significant amounts of money. Today it's seventy-two thousand dollars. If you can hire, or if you can get nine people to volunteer, that you only are responsible for... for $72,000, I'd leave it. Now, that's me speaking. I don't even have it, and I didn't request the opt-out. But I'm okay with spending $72,000 for nine individuals that volunteer a lot of time. Thank you. And I can answer, try to answer anyone's questions. Thank you.
Bob?
Well, I have a number of questions, but I'll try to limit them. Part of my concern, why I have questions and want to talk about this, has to do with new people coming in, school committee or what have you. I think I heard someone say that they would not be included if they came on board. That doesn't seem accurate to me. I don't know, I'm asking.
Perhaps, perhaps the requister of the stipend who's sitting behind you can answer what the request was, and we certainly asked legal counsel. So, I'll have Steve address it first, then I can address that we asked legal counsel.
The request from the school committee was a financial stipend only, no benefits associated with that, to alleviate the concern of discrimination or what have you. Other half of the school committee does get a financial stipend only, and then there is a state mandate on how regional school committees are compensated, but it has to be explicitly requested, and the request was a financial stipend only.
Right. And we entertain that after seeking legal counsel, that if we did that, could it somehow be reversed? And we were advised, no, as long as that's in the original agreement. Anything can probably be argued, but we would not entertain a stipend if there was health benefits attached to it. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Moderator, could, would the town council confirm what Mr. Powderly just said?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, yes, I can confirm what Mr. Powderly said. It's our opinion that the Board of Selectmen would not be obligated to give school committee members health insurance, even if they take a stipend.
Who, Mr. Moderator, who would make the decision, if the stipend of 100, a thousand, whatever, dollars went to the school committee or what have you, and school committees put a lot of time in, a lot of time, I think perhaps even more than another board that might qualify. But who makes the decision whether they would get health benefits or not? Would it be the Board of Selectmen, or would it be passed at town meeting, or what?
Town Council?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, it would be the Board of Selectmen.
And my last question, again, to the FinCom, what was your rationale for being opposed to this?
I think, sorry. So, explained, but if you look at the rationale for them having it, it's cheaper for them to have it. So, if they were able to get it, let's just say that we allowed the, a school committee, for example, to have health insurance, it would still benefit the town to allow them that option. So, we just, financially, it makes more sense for them, for the Board of Selectmen.
Financially, it makes more sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. LaCamera?
And I guess, to add to that, I think it's a little lost on the Finance Committee, anyway, what problem we're solving with this article. As it works right now, the Board of Selectmen are the authority on granting coverage if there's a coverage change in the future to a different board that will be eligible in the future, and we're comfortable with that authority.
Mr. LaCamera?
What was the cost for the town officials' health insurance prior to the petition?
I have no idea.
You said it was 172,000.
Well, no, you mentioned that.
I never said 172,000.
141, perhaps, was it?
No, I mentioned 140, 114. 14.
14, 14.
Right? 114. I never mentioned that number. So, it's 114,000 prior to the petition. Two town officials came off the health insurance in the last month. Correct?
I don't know, Rich.
Well, you should know.
This is, this is a time, I asked Clarinda the other day on November 6th to give me this update. This is dated November 6th, Rich.
I understand. I said a month ago, before the petition.
I have no idea. I have no idea.
I told you.
Okay, wait a minute.
I told you at the Board of Selectmen, okay, I'm sorry.
Through me.
Okay.
And I'm going to ask if anyone can answer that question. If they can't, you're going to have to live with that. Okay?
So, you had mentioned, John, that you weren't on the health insurance, right?
That I what?
You were not on the health insurance.
I'm not on it now.
Were you on the health insurance?
None of your business.
Okay.
None of your business, Rich.
So, you were. But that's okay. So, then...
You're not going to, you're not going to intimidate people by your bullying.
No, he answered, he answered that he wasn't on health insurance.
I understand that.
Right, I answered the question. You answered the question.
I'm your personality.
Right. So, the next question, the next question is that as of July 1, that the board decided for the employees to give a $5,000 stipend or a bonus if they weren't on health insurance. Five town officials are getting that. That's $25,000, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, $25,000, they're getting it. So, when somebody came off the health insurance this month, they wound up getting $2,500?
That's true.
That's true?
Yeah.
Okay. So, two people came off a month ago, and now they're getting the stipend.
No. One is.
Okay. One is. All right, fine.
One is.
So, what people don't realize is that these plans, the Blue Cross Plan, elect plan is $36,000 a year. The Network Blue is $30,000 a year, and the town, for these nine officials, pays 75% of that cost. So, that's a significant amount of money. Okay? What I want to point out is that the selectmen decide that they only want to hire employees that work 19 hours a week, because if they work 20 hours a week, they'd be entitled to health insurance. There's 19 of those employees that work under 20 hours a week. So, it's okay that we give health insurance to people, get a small stipend, but we don't give it to part-time employees. Thank you.
That's a rhetorical statement. I see no further. Just like Christmas. Something new?
Oh, yes, something new. Like Yulia Fabian, 30 South Kingman Street, Board of Assessors, in my fourth year right now. I am, for lack of a better term, the white elephant in the room. I take the stipend, all $500 of it. If you folks think that what we do isn't worth $500, you have no idea what some of these boards do. Plain and simple.
I think you mean 5,000.
500 a week, a month it comes out to be. Okay? I get the stipend, so I never submit gas receipts. I go to school. I had to pass a licensing exam. I spent hours in school, so that we're sure that we're doing your tax bills properly. How do you expect any continuity if you're not willing to help the people who are ready to volunteer? I could get a job making a lot more than $500 a month, and instead, I choose because, you know, this community's been good to me, and I want to be good to it. I, I just have no idea how people think that you're going to get someone qualified to stay on and continue to do a good job. I mean, I'm coming to this position with a bachelor's degree in communications, a bachelor's degree in economics. I've passed the, the licensing exam took me four hours. It was an open book test, and, you know, pat myself on the back, I'm no dummy. You know, I mean, I'm planning on going to classes next summer, so that I can get, you know, a license to do, to make sure that the tax bills are right. I mean, not really quite sure why this is bothering so many people this year. I don't know what to say. You know, what we don't have in this town is continuity. We're going through superintendents. We're lucky the guy that's there now has been there a couple of years. You got to give a little if you want to get good people. You know, otherwise, I could take what I've learned in a couple of years, and I could go work in any city or town anywhere, and I could get a paycheck. But, you know, as long as I'm making something, I go to town hall two, three times a week. Who pays for my gas? I could submit all those bills. If you guys want me to submit all my bills, I will.
I think you made your point.
Well, I hope I made my point.
Yeah.
Okay? We're talking about nine people here. Nine people that do a really good job.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Before we do anything, we have to work on an amendment. Remember that? Changing the amount. I mean, the time, the time. So, let us just work on the amendment, yes or no, and then we'll talk about the motion. Okay? It's a majority vote. All in favor of the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to the amendment, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. The amendment passes by majority vote. We now go to the actual motion. Now, did somebody want to talk? Oh, yeah, Ms. ...
So, I can address Rich's question. My open enrollment in my company opened correspondingly at the same time that this petition came forward. I didn't want to be left without health insurance. I was taking the town health insurance. I have taken an opt-out. From what I receive as a stipend in this position is a total of $4,500 plus a $2,500 opt-out. So, I received $7,000 for the time that I put in for this position. I do this not for the money. I don't really care about the health insurance benefits, because I can get them somewhere else. But I understand that, because I'm self-employed, and I happen to work for a firm, so it's kind of ironic, but that's how you work in a partnership with a CPA firm. So, I have access to health insurance through my company. However, with the time and effort that I put in, which is probably, I'd say, on average, 10, 10 hours a week, if not 15 hours a week, that it would be very difficult for someone to be in this position on the Board of Selectmen unless they were self-employed or they happened to be retired. And I think that is a concern that I think people need to consider with regard to this particular motion. Anybody who would be coming onto the board after this, after we renegotiated with the stipends, will be coming in at a 50-50. Now, the insurance is actually the same for the town employees as it is for the elected officials. So, what happens with that and the fact that we have a very expensive plan, a lot of that is dictated by state law, that the plan itself cannot be less equivalent than the GIC plan that's offered by the state. So, there's a lot to be said about what the state mandates. The state mandates that for employees that work over 19 hours a week, and they start to work 20 hours a week, that they get full-time benefits for part-time work in that regard too. But that also allows them to vest into the plan, so that they are then eligible for health insurance for life, which is the OPEP plan that we talked about earlier in Article 1. So, I think just from the consideration of the time and effort that it does take, and trying to attract people to this position, it is a difficult consideration, and maybe some people actually would be more attracted to this position, because it did offer health insurance benefits.
Seeing no further questions, we'll move this Article 12 to a vote. It requires a majority. All in favor of this article, raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed to this article, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. Article 12 fails. I will now entertain a motion to dissolve.
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you. Please put your cards in the gray box outside the door.